Great, good evening. I, we were just in executive session, so I officially reopen the meeting. Per Governor Baker's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, the public will not be allowed to physically access this school committee meeting, but it can be viewed live on Channel 14 and recording of this meeting can be viewed on YouTube. We will begin with the pledge allegiance. Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on religion, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And this is our first meeting of the, of 2022. So first, I'd like to start by wishing everyone a happy new year. I would like to remind everyone that this meeting is being recorded. If any member of the public would like to make an audio or video recording of this meeting, please notify me by raising the hand icon on your screen and I will notify the public for the Massachusetts Public Meeting Laws. Do we have anyone making recording this evening? I see. Oh, there you are, Callie Rumelard. Okay, thank you very much. Mission and vision, Andrea.
Sure. The Falmouth Public Schools creates world-class student learning experiences. Our Clippers are empowered to pursue their goals with curiosity, integrity, and resiliency. Our vision: Clippers are creative, inquisitive, and engaged learners who participate in their community as socially responsible citizens. Clippers effectively communicate and solve problems that impact the world around them.
Thank you, Andrea. Also new for 2022 is the return of the Fish Bowl, as we call it. It is student feedback. The setup is a little different. We have two different categories. So first is green, and this category is what would make your school life better. So the first one is from an eighth grade student at Lawrence School. And so again, the question was, what would make your school life better? And this person states, less strict dress code, longer advisories in the afternoon, and reinstating, and reinstating bull dot time from last year. So thank you for that. The other color is blue, and that is what is going well in school. And this is from Lily at Lawrence School. So what is going well in school? We are happy to be back in the building. It is nice to have advisory because we get to see our friends before our classes. Gym is also great because we get to go in the workout room. So thank you very much to Lily and our other students at Lawrence School for your feedback. We appreciate it and we, we take notes and we listen. So thank you very much. Next is public comments. Members of the public are welcome to speak about items that are not on the agenda. Comments should be limited to two minutes in length. Due to open meeting law, there will be no debate or action taken on public comment items. For items on the agenda, the chair may accept comments from the public following the committee's discussion of an item. Additional comments and feedback can also be submitted by email to schoolcommittee@falmouth.k12.ma.us. Do we have any public comments? Okay. Seeing none, the first item on our agenda is an update from the health agent and school physician. And so can we promote Scott and Dr. Parkinson?
Everybody hear me okay?
Yes, we can. Hello, thank you for joining us tonight.
Yeah, you're welcome. Do you want me to start first?
I guess, please.
All right, I'm gonna share a screen if that's okay, which is worth a thousand words.
Thank you.
Hold on one sec. Are we seeing that okay?
Yes, we are. Thank you.
It's, it's not pretty. I'm gonna show it to you anyway. So here's our case counts by week. As you can see, had to up in the upper corner, adjust the scale from 200 to 400. And those last year's numbers of, you know, 100, 120 pale into comparison of the far right, which shows you the last one, two, three, four, going into five weeks of really high cases. So the case counts are, the case count is of yesterday afternoon. I haven't had a chance to get, to redo the slide with 3,362. So we've been averaging quite a bit of cases over the last three to four weeks. So looking at the county, same thing with the county, these are three-day average county cases, similar, state similar. Everybody's sort of in the same boat right here. And the reason why, let me go back up here, the reason why I also put a question mark, you guys see the question mark here, the reason being is these are, these are confirmed PCR tests only. So it, it shows you relative to what we are with PCRs. It doesn't actually give you a complete accurate case count because home kits are not contact traced. They don't go into the, the Maven, they don't go into the system. So the actual number of cases that are occurring right now are unknown. You know, I like to always be able to give you accuracy, but PCRs were pretty much what most people got. We never put the rapid antigens that you got, but they kind of mimic. You know, we, once we picked case counts and we did it this way, this is the way we've just stuck with it, but home kits don't show up. So I don't know what the actual cases are. I mean, there's definitely some number well above the 380 or so cases we had the previous week. So looking at, again, this is all based on PCR, but it tells you what we're doing is that Falmouth's daily incidence rate adjusted, all these are adjusted to a population of 100,000 to make well fleet be the same as Barnstable, even though the town size is different. It's adjusted to if everybody had a population of 100,000. Falmouth would be averaging just under 100 cases per day if it had a population of 100,000, which means we're roughly estimating at this period of time between December 19th and the 1st of January. The state's a little, when we get this, it's usually a week behind. Means we're somewhere around there, that, that average was around 30 something cases per day. Because we have about 33,000 people in town. But compared to our peers, we're sort of in the same with the rest of the county. Our positivity, you want to see numbers around 2%. We're at 12.2%, so extremely high, extremely high everywhere. So at this point in time, you are far more likely, probably three or four or five times more likely to be exposed to COVID than any other time during the pandemic, right? And I don't think I'm telling you anything you don't know already. Now, some things I could say that is not necessarily, you know, what, what, what the, I'll talk about boosters and Omicron in a second. You can see up in the top, you see 1/6 is last time I got the data. We had 15 hospitalizations in four in the ICU. The vast majority of those will be unvaccinated. We still have a population of vaccinated, unvaccinated people. You see numbers of 57 and 7. The previous day was 53 and 7, 33 and 4, right after the holiday, right after Christmas. And you say, you know, those numbers are higher than obviously we'd like to see, but I, the next slide I'm gonna show you is one of these slides I probably gave it to you back in February. So January, February of 2021, you see numbers that aren't all that much different, 42 and 10, 52 and 7, 30 and 3. But, you know, if you look at the proportion of more cases, the four times the amount of cases we're having, you're not seeing four times the hospitalization. Does that make sense? So you're not seeing the hospitalization rate. And also, this is, the slide is deaths, three-day average deaths. In the middle, in the green, you see where you're getting over 10 deaths of, or three-day average throughout the county. You don't see that in the far right over the last few weeks. Now, there is a lagging indicator, but it's not necessarily showing up. If, if it was all things being equal to last year without a vaccine, and that was the original version of COVID back then, you would probably, if it was back like it was then, it would see, you know, deaths in maybe the 20s or 30s. You're not seeing that. Also, at the state level, this is all breakthrough cases. In the state of Massachusetts, there's been 179,594 with 3,909 hospitalizations and 942 deaths. That's 2.18% hospitalization rate. Now, this is chart the state started to provide sometime around September, October. The number was more like 4% and the deaths were about 0.8. So that's another indicator that, and this is what I would say to take from my presentation is you are far more likely to get COVID at this point, at any point in the pandemic, but you are less likely to be hospitalized as an individual. All right, so there's more cases, but you're, and the cases will continue, hospitalizations is definitely going to be up by the sheer number of cases. But if you've been vaccinated and definitely if you've been boosted, and we'll talk about Omicron in a second, your likelihood, one, an individual's likelihood of hospitalization is lower now if you do contract COVID, but you're more likely to contract COVID than any other time. Talking a little bit about Omicron, this is from the state. All this orange starting at the far left in October 2nd is Delta. Purple is indicated by Omicron. And to think it can't happen fast, look at 12, 4, you see about 2%, 1%, 2% Omicron. And within four weeks, it's now 95 or plus percent Omicron. So Omicron's taken over for Delta. It is definitely more transmissible. I mean, this definitely clearly shows that. It does show that there's been less severe outcomes by the fact that the hospitalizations haven't jumped proportional to the, to the number of cases. And the vaccines have shown to work especially if boosted. So Omicron does to be more of, it does lie more in the throat and the upper respiratory, less of the COVID pneumonia and the deep lung issues of previous versions, especially Delta. So that's a couple of different reasons why, in this particular chart, that's the only two reasons I can think why the hospitalizations would go down. Because you, again, as time progresses, you're further away from your shots. You're further away from your two, your one or two dose series, your initial series. Going to vaccinations, our vaccinations are good. 94% of all eligible residents have had at least one dose, and 82% of all eligible residents are fully vaccinated. You're particularly probably concerned, you know, most concerned with the 5 to 19. So if you look at the 5 to 11, 42% first dose, 31% full, 12 to 15, this is just every, all, all the age brackets in town, of that age bracket. 78% first, 70% full, 16 to 19, 89 to 78. And we're about 40% boosted with 12,622 booster doses. So that's what we have with vaccinations. Testing and vaccine, vaccines are pretty rarely readily available. They're in pharmacies. You've got the Mossable County Health Office, you've got Community MD, the Community Health Center, homebound, if anybody you know is homebound, they should be calling the Health Department. We can get the VNA out there to do that. And we're running school-based clinics as well. And Lori can talk about that. We've done quite a few school-based clinics and continue to do so. And I have a clinic going on that, well, I hope this one's full by now, but is at the Gus Canty, we're doing one on the 19th, and we'll continue to do some clinics as well. Testing, well, you guys can, Lori can talk about school-based testing. It's a, it's quite a bear. You've got Convenient MD, you've got the pharmacies for testing. Falmouth Hospital is going to be expanded. Some information will come out about expanding of Falmouth Hospital. Their grounds, they still do that. You just want to check the Mossable County Health website. And then there was a stop to spread at the Melody Tent that opened up this week at the Melody Tent. That's run by the state on Monday, Tuesdays, and Wednesdays with the times there, 9 to 1, 1 to 6, and 9 to 1. Then, of course, home kits. And we're really promoting, the feds and the state are really promoting home kits. And other things I'd like to add before I ask, open up the questions, contact tracing has been sort of reduced. We don't do quite as hard contact tracing. The state has brought that down to more of an initial contact, not, you know, 10, 15 calls per case, which I don't know if we could do that right now with the number of cases we have. And also, the, the guidance has also changed for, from 10 days to five days for the, for the isolation and quarantine procedures. So we've had some changes over this past week. And I'm gonna stop sharing the screen and open up to any questions.
Thank you for that. Any questions for Scott, please? Melissa?
Hi Scott, thanks for your always great screen sharing and your graphs, and I really appreciate it. I have a quick question. How do we tell the difference between the Delta and Omicron? If I were just to go to ERG Center and get a PCR, how will I know that I definitively had which variant?
You will not. Yeah, the reason being is, is that's a, the state is not sampling every PCR or every test for whether it's Omicron or Delta. So that's a specific, very specific and very probably expensive test. So what they do is basically they're on percentages. If they test 100 random samples and 95 come out, that's where they come with 95%. You're not going to know. But that being said, go, if I went back to the chart right now, Delta's just about wiped out. I mean, Omicron's pretty much wiped out Delta in terms of percentages, much like there's no real original COVID floating around. So you won't know. So just assume it's Omicron, because that's pretty much what the ballgame is. Kind of like what happened in July, right? There was very little COVID around, and all of a sudden we had Delta.
Thank you very much for the clarification. So we would then just base it on symptoms, how?
Well, the symptoms, the symptoms are similar. It just happens to be, you know, I was on a call with the state epidemiologist and she was talking about, it seems to more manifest. Definitely shows up more in the throat as far as when they sample. But it seems to be more upper respiratory, but it doesn't mean it can't be lower respiratory, especially if you've got a lot of comorbidities, and especially if you haven't been vaxxed. I'm sure it's gonna show up any which way, you know, so.
Any other questions for Scott? Leah?
Sorry. I just, there's, there's a lot of information out there around mask wearing right now and what are the best masks for how contagious Omicron is? And I guess this is for Scott and Dr. Parkinson around what your advice is to our community for mask wearing.
These are the good ones. So, you know, when a doctor operated you on you before or come to see you, they always wore one of these, right? So these are the better ones. You know, at the beginning of the pandemic, we, we, there was a shortage of these surgical masks and especially the N95s. So they told you put anything you can over your mouth. These are more readily available. I would encourage all of those to wear a decent mask. These are designed and purpose-built as opposed to the T-shirt that was cut up or the scarf that was made into a mask or whatever. Especially if you can put it up to a light and you can sort of see the light and read a book through the mask, it's probably not all that effective. So yeah, I, it really would encourage you to wear the surgical mask. They're built for purpose. I don't think you'd want a surgeon coming in and operating you on with a cloth mask made out of pantyhose or T-shirts or something like that. You want them to come out with one of these or an N95, right? So I think that's what we should be gearing towards. They work better. I find them more comfortable. I find these fairly comfortable, so.
Yep, important question, Leah. So thank you for asking that. Any other questions for Scott? And Dr. Parkinson, good evening. I'd like to also invite you in this conversation, anything you'd like to add?
Well, just, you know, just to piggyback on what Scott was saying, and thanks for outlining it. You know, Scott is, is just, I mean, from a clinical point of view, I would say, you know, everyone feels like they're, they're drinking from a, from a hose, if not a, you know, if not a, a fire hose, you know? It's, it's extremely busy. The nurses at the schools are extremely busy. The offices are, you know, extremely busy. And, and not only that, but even getting the yet how difficult it is to get the rapid antigen test kits in the, in the pharmacies or what have you. And we're having the same kind of supply issues with getting PCR tests. And so, you know, we appreciate people's patience. You know, all the offices are trying to handle as many kids as, as we can. And you know, I, I think, I think that it's been a difficult time as well because, you know, we've all had our cheese moved a little bit in terms of what the expectation was. You know, this time last year, we would have all been hunkered down and distancing and, and not, you know, returning to class and not having sports. And this year, you know, the, the approach has been, you know, at the state level more of, okay, just put your head down and let's kind of plow through this and it will pass. And you know, and, and so as Scott put it very well, you know, you, maybe you're about four times less likely to be hospitalized with this compared to this time last year, but you're four times more likely to get it. So and, you know, hit the numbers, those interesting, the numbers sort of show that hospitalizations are similar to what they were this time last year. And you know, so, and, and we're, and all these new recommendations are coming out, and I think it's hard for parents to get their head around. And it's hard for, it's hard for all the clinical people to get your head around, because we know it's gone from 10 days of isolation down to five, as long as you can mask for another five. But then what do you do with return to sports? You know, where the recommendations from American County Pediatrics is still wait for after 10 days before returning to play. And then what do you do for phys ed? And what if one body's recommendation conflicts with another? And, and it's, it's been a bit, you know, it's been confusing. And, you know, when the advice from on high is confusing, then the advice we give starts to become confusing and then people get frustrated. And, and that's very understandable, because we get frustrated ourselves, because we want to be able to give one, one consistent set of advice. I can tell you the nurses around the, the county are speaking regularly. The school doctors around the county are speaking regularly. The other pediatricians are involved in the conversation. Everybody is trying to do as much the same thing as they can. It's just, it's very, very difficult.
Difficult indeed. Bill Dorfner, I see your name. I mean, your hand is up.
Yeah, I appreciate both of you coming on here and always giving us some great information. I want to also, you know, this time of year is usually when folks, in addition to getting their, their vax, or getting their flu shot. How are the numbers of this, this Omicron? Are they similar to what they would normally be this time of year with the, the flu? Which, which also tends to be spread by not covering your mouth and, and so forth. And I had a follow-up question to that as well, and I can't think of it right now, but is, is this similar to this, this timeframe, this, this year? This time of year for what we've typically seen for flu, flu season?
So that's, that's a loaded question. So first of all, thank you for bringing up the flu, because it is still important for people to get their flu vaccines. And, you know, with the state mandate last year, there are some people who kind of dug their heels in and said, I'm not getting it, because they told me to get it last year. And, and I really, you know, encourage people to still get their flu shot. In terms of the numbers, no, it's unprecedented. I mean, I mean, in 25 years of doing this, you know, I think the year, the year of swine flu, if you remember back to 08 or 09, we had a two-week period in October when it was just, you know, it just blew through and everybody was getting, was getting it. And, but then it was gone, you know? And this is like that, but it just keeps going and going and going. And you know, just when you thought that 6,000 cases a day in Massachusetts was horrendous this time last year, now we have 30,000 cases a day. It's just, you know, the, the number of people who are positive, I mean, the contact tracing is almost impossible now, because it's which one of the six exposures that you've had, you know, are you gonna trace? And so yes, flu shot's important. Yeah, this is a typical time of year when we would see the flu. We are still seeing some flu, although much less than we're, you know, probably, Scott might have the numbers, but maybe 5% of what we're seeing for COVID. And it's, you know, it's really, it's really hard on everybody. I think it's especially hard on the frontline healthcare people and, you know, including the school nurses who are just, you know, two years of wearing PPE is not something I would, I would invite anybody to do that, you know? It, it, it's, it wears on you.
And actually, thank you. That was, that reminded me of my, the second question I have is, are you seeing a much lower number of flu cases than you would typically see this time of year? I'm just wondering what the impact of us actually being aware of washing hands and covering our mouths has had.
Yeah, I'm not sure why. So, so 2020, we didn't, 2020, 21 winter, we didn't see any, right? Because people were distant and wearing masks. And, you know, so we're seeing significantly more than last year, but still a lot less than the typical flu season. Yeah, at this point, but you never know when the flu is gonna peak. Sometimes it peaks in March. So that's, you know, to be continued.
Scott, your hand is up.
Yeah, so it's hard to tell. Obviously, we don't home test and run to get tests during 2018 during a normal flu season. So the only flu cases you're gonna see are those that are being tested at the doctor's office or at a hospital or in a long-term care. So it's really hard to get a true number of the flu when most people just stay home and it would be an untracked case. So, but the R value, the value of how many people get infected by one person is much higher for Omicron or any of the, you know, the Covid's than it is for the flu. So I would say that there's always, there's gonna be more COVID cases than flu, if all things being equal, just because it spreads that much better. And getting back a little bit to the guidance about the 10-day to five-day, the CDC came out with that just after Christmas, I think the 27th. They've already done an update on the 4th and the 9th. So it's been a popsicle headache for determining this because of the detail. It's not necessarily, it hasn't inherently changed much. It's just the clarifications. I can tell you, Kathy, my nurse, and I have spent the entire week just trying to go through it and answer questions. So that's been a bear. And the other thing I wanted to mention is contact tracing, when I said it's kind of gone away, that's only for the general public. So long-term care, school settings, concrete care, that's still, still being done. So that was the other thing I wanted to add, so.
Thank you. And Dr. Dorfner, you want to share a COVID update with the schools? Yes?
So this week, the DUCI has extended the mask mandate until February 20, or at least until February 28. We, Dr. Parkinson mentioned the, you know, 10 down to five days. So in the schools, we are, it's fluid. So you, you can't come back with symptoms. They have to be resolving. So you may come back on day six if your, your symptoms are resolved, or if you have no symptoms, if you're asymptomatic. But that doesn't preclude that if your symptoms resolve on day seven, you can come back on eight. So it's kind of a rolling number of win students. So it does add another management issue for our COVID tracers and our nurses and administrators with that. We are also, just to talk about the distribution of the antigen self-test, the staff, we held two sessions right before returning on the 3rd, on Friday, the December 31st, and on Sunday, January 2nd. And we had a, a good percentage of staff that picked up the test. And so we, we felt that staffing was actually good our first week. So we felt pretty good about that. There's a distribution of the KN95 mask. It's what I'm wearing tonight, that every staff member, employee of the Falmouth Public Schools received enough mask for the month of January, for the workdays for the month of January. It's still their choice whether they, if they wear them or not. I did track student attendance last week. We averaged 18.5% absentee rate throughout last week, which is quite a bit higher than what we normally do after the holiday break. Vaccination clinics, we're continuing to run the clinics. We had the second clinic at Morris Pond last week. Yesterday, we had the second, the second clinic for a second dose at Falmouth High School. We were also able to give boosters for 16-year-olds and up that registered for the booster. I can't say enough, Dr. Parkinson talked about, you know, our nurses, our contact tracers. Just, all I ask is everyone to have patience. It is overwhelming. Scott, thank you for sharing the number of cases that's happening. We're seeing an, obviously, an increase at the schools as well. And the contact tracing and the test and state program is, it's quite a bit. And it's taking lots of time throughout the day. We're just having a lot of positives. So I commend everybody that is hanging in there. It's, it's hard. And we are trying, we're trying to return the emails and the phone calls as quickly as possible. But, but you are gonna see delayed responses. I mean, that's where we are right now. So.
Thank you for that. Kelly, I see your hand.
Just a quick thing, since I have a 15-year-old, you can get back, get boosted, even if you're under 16. And the, the clinic yesterday at the high school was actually doing that, once the state finally approved it. So thank you first for boosting kids under 16, but I just wanted to make sure that people know. Especially if they were like me, and as soon as the CDC approved it, they were immediately trying to get an appointment and kept getting kicked out for being ineligible. That's finally That it's finally working now and we can, we can get our our younger kids boosted too. Of course, then they're absent because they feel lousy the next day. So it doesn't help the absenteeism.
But in the longer run and stuff, playing forward. So thank you, Kelly, for that. Info. Any other questions for Dr. Door? Leah, I see you.
Just just a little bit more detail. So it's 12 and up. And it needs to be five months after. So there was another switch from six months to now five months. From your last shot, your second shot, so.
Okay, thank you for that update. Any other questions or comments? I want to make sure everyone's great. As always, Dr. Parkinson and Scott, thank you so much for being here at our meetings. It's so helpful to get this real time snapshot of what's happening in our community. So. Thank you so much for all of your hard work. It's a really big lift and we appreciate it. So thank you. Have a good night. Next on our agenda is the student advisory report. And which student will be presenting?
Anna Bennett with us tonight.
Okay, can we promote Anna Bennett, please?
Hi, thank you so much. My name's Anna. I'm a class representative for the class of 2024. And I want to start off by saying that at FHS this past week was our first week with a new interim principal. And we were all really, we're sad to see Ms. Gans go and wish her well. With everything in her future. We, the transition was very smooth and it was so great to have Mr. Mack, who, you know, he's been with us. For, he's been a Clipper, he's been, he's been with us and it was really nice to have a familiar face. Through that transition. I think that went very smoothly and was, we were all glad to have him there. It doesn't take me being here to know that COVID cases are way up and so many students are absent. Actually, my. One of my classes, I normally have 15 kids in it. We had three on, I think it was last Tuesday. And that's the story for so many kids. You know, classes with like as little as three, six kids in it that would normally have, you know, 15 to 20. Just so many people out with positive COVID cases or quarantining. Or their family has COVID or they're not feeling well for some maybe possibly on COVID related reason. And it's really difficult when you're at home. I know we don't have the remote option and it's it's. Resounding throughout the school that when you're at home, there's only so much you can do. And if you have COVID, you test positive, you're staying at home and you're not getting. Any of your work, you have to come back and catch up. And even if you're totally fine. Sitting at home, you have COVID and you're out of school for at least, you know. However, many days, five days. And then you have to come back and catch up on all that work. We have the first semester coming to a close in a few weeks and students have midterms. Midterms exams coming up and. Semester closing, you know, final grades to worry about and to keep up. And I think that's been really difficult. With students having to be absent as well as teachers. Again, with, you know, COVID up as it is. A lot of teachers have been out. Either sick or they have a sick child at home or they've been exposed and. It's also difficult for the teachers to. Effectively puts together a lesson when they're not. In school and they can't be there and it's hard for students to. Make up for that missed work when the teachers aren't there as well. We, someone mentioned sports earlier and I think that. You know, it's so, it's with COVID. Our sports are so great for students and a lot of people, you know, it's what's keeping them coming to school like if. If they're not sick, if they don't have COVID, it's like, I can't miss school today. I have hockey practice. I have basketball after. And I think that's been really great. Our winter sports teams. Actually, our boys hockey team, just as of today. It was shut down through, I believe, January 24th because of COVID. They're having a great season so far and I know everyone's excited for them to just get back up and get back to it. Our girls hockey team's doing great. The basketball, both basketball teams have. Have started. You know, they've had some tough games. They've had some great wins. And I'm pretty sure that's all I have.
Great. Thank you, Anna. Any questions for Anna? Leah.
Anna, I just, I really appreciate hearing about what it's like right now in school. So I just, I just wanted to say thank you for. For explaining that because, you know, that's what I think about every day is how are we making this work? Because so many kids are out, so many staff members are out. So I I appreciate the realness of your report. So thank you.
Yeah, and thank you, Leah. Just to piggyback on that, this is sort of a question for Dr. Door. I think Anna mentioned something important about. If you are out and you do miss something of being in person. What supports or modifications are being, you know, are available to students? She mentioned, you know, having to come back and make up work or they being allowed extra time to make up the work. What does that look like for a student who's been out for a few days?
Sonya, do you want to address that?
Sure. So for students who have been out, they have the opportunities to access. Learning through the playlist and to access the learning management, which is School G in the upper grades. In addition, looking back to in this conversation we've had around our attendance policy, they also have an equal number of days that they were. Out and many people have extended that grace considerably to. Make sure that students have been caught up on the content and skills that they need to practice and reinforce.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Melissa?
I just kind of, I actually was. Thinking exactly what Leah had said out loud. So thanks for stealing the thoughts out of my brain. I appreciate the. The honest truth as to what it really looks like. I. I, you know, we hear about our our kids being home. But and it's one thing to. It is one thing to have the data and know about the data and it's another thing. To have a student in the classroom say. Last week there were 15 kids, today there were three. And I know that we see it on paper and I know that we see it in emails. But there's nothing quite like hearing reports from the boots on the ground. And Anna is definitely, you know, and this is why we have student advisory to get. You know, the the actual what's happening in school. I'm sorry that the hockey team has paused. I know that they're doing amazing work this year. But, you know, it's just. Temporary and just for now. I appreciate, Sonya, you letting us know that, of course, there are supports. In place for the students. But, you know, it's it's hard. So thank you so much.
Terry.
I know that the students can look at the playlist. But what about if they have questions for the teachers? Do they send more emails? This is directed at Anna, if she's still there. Do you like contact your teacher via email or do your friends that need extra help? How much, how easy is it to get right to the teacher? Without anything in between?
Yeah, so I feel the the teachers are doing a great job. They're, you know, absolutely everyone's doing the best that they can to provide these kinds of supports. And you are given time to make up the work that you miss. And then while you're at home. You can, you know, it just depends on the class mostly like there, because there's some things that you could do. You could almost keep up online and then there's some stuff that you really can't do anything until you get back in the classroom. And so those times, those days that you are absent, I. Like teachers are so great with responding to their email, especially when there's students and there's so many students missing. It's like. Like some teachers will just send out like a big email to all the students who are out on a. On a specific day and just say, this is what you missed. This is what you can do to make it up at home and this is what you'll have to do when you return. And they're like, everyone is doing absolutely the best that they can. And it's just. It's just a lot and it's just a lot of stress for students to have to worry about making that up and have to, even with the supports in place, it's. It's stressful and it's it's difficult.
Well, thank you again for your honest input. We we don't know. Like Melissa said, you could see things on paper, but. The person explaining it makes a lot more impact. Thank you for being with us tonight, too.
Absolutely. Any other questions for Anna? And it was great meeting you and thank you for being here and stay healthy and good luck for the rest of the year.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Take care. So great. Next is the presentation of the FY23 budget. Patrick.
Actually, just Dr. Door. And Patrick. Together.
Ready? Yeah.
So why the presentation comes up, we have. This is will be the fourth time presenting this presentation. We had the first on the January 3rd for Lawrence High School. On January 5th, we had all four elementary schools together and presented and yesterday we presented at Morris Pond. And after tonight, where everyone can view this, we will be do one complete virtual session for anyone that would like to. Join us and be able to interact with questions and that will be on the 19th. So. Yeah, what's? I tried. We're stuck. You're stuck.
Oh, there we go.
Okay, great. So you can go advance the next story. So this, I can do it now? Yes, it does. I just had to get past the other. So just a little bit on the budget process. Our, the district strategic plan, which is our district framework for student success. We begin with that. We see where we are headed. It's our roadmap. So where are we headed? And what do we need to do to get there? And certainly that is looking at. Assessing where we where we are along that roadmap and the and the next steps. We also take time to identify student needs. For example, our ELD population is growing rapidly. In the month of December, I believe we had 57 new. English language line students that joined us. That is usually a a number that we see in January. So we made the decision. To add another 0.5 ELD teacher. Normally, we look at the data in the spring and then we make an assessment for the following year and we. Felt that it was absolutely necessary to add the ELD teacher now. Adding a 0.5 ELD teacher has been pretty typical over the last several years. So again, we'll reassess that in the spring, but that's one example how we always look at the the student needs and. Certainly address those as part of the the budget planning and process. Assessing staffing needs. We. You know, always look at. You know, the the enrollment class size and then what what the staffing needs are and balancing that with the needed. Additional reading teachers, additional school adjustment counselors, additional ELD teachers, which has been pretty steady. And adding the staff. So then we look at the budget and we align it with priorities. We often have to prioritize. In one year's time, we don't necessarily get to. You know, everything we want to do, but we certainly have been able to get to everything we need to do. And and with those priorities, then we want to do a multi year outlook. So that we're we're trying to plan a plan ahead. So the superintendent priorities, I do not have anything specific that I added this year. These are ongoing priorities, the access and equity, focusing on making sure that we have academic progress for every student. We. Always look at the physical responsible decision making. So balancing the student needs, class sizes, student choice and opportunities is extremely important. There's the access. To. New opportunities that students. Can be exposed to, whether that's, even though I had to put it on hold. But an example was bringing the Portuguese language to the elementary school. COVID happened, we we put pause on that, but that's a new opportunity. And that's just an example of trying to balance. Everything but trying to bring new student choices. And then we have the budgetary pressures that have to go into that decision making. One of the, an example of a budgetary pressure recently is the cost of our PPE. The filters, that's an added. You know, budget line item that probably will not go away and we've had to figure out how to do that in the operating budget. Gradually reducing our extra support through the SIR funds. That was the federal funding for COVID. Last year, we, the fund supported 90 additional staff members and this year we, it supports 60 additional staff. And intentionally, we are gradually reducing, knowing that the the money will go away. So next year. We will be able to support probably somewhere between 25, 30, maybe even 35 positions. And then that'll then gradually go away. Certainly always making a priority of health and safety. And always strengthening our community and school partnerships, which really makes. Falmouth unique and strong because of those partnerships. So focusing on that. So just looking at the budget and student enrollment. This is the enrollment for this school year per school. And I think the next slide. Okay, so just I I wanted a little bit on this slide. We we were so happy to see 250 kindergarten students this year. As you can see, over the last three years, the the numbers have been quite a bit lower. In grade four, as you can see, we had 257 and in grade seven, we had 259. So. Every, every so often you see a grade level that or a cohort. That is higher. And so we would love to see another 250 kindergarten students next year. However, if you look at the trends, that that may not be likely. So kindergarten is the hardest to. To plan for. Because it's, you know, pretty much through the spring and even through the summer before we have a number. So budgeting for that. We always have to budget for for more students. We don't necessarily get that number. But we certainly budget for that.
Do these numbers include the school choice kids?
They do.
Thank you.
And our free and reduced lunch percentages, as you can see, for this year, it's a 37%. It's quite a bit lower than the last two years at 45 and 46. However. The conditions in which families can qualify has been reduced. And so that's where we see a reduction this year. However, if you look at FY19, we're still slightly above the FY19. Number. So just gives you an idea of our the status.
And not to interrupt you, but do you also think it's because all lunches are free? So therefore they're not filling out the paperwork or is that separate?
So there's many sources where we actually get the the data and it's not just our free. So. I think it's. Patrick and Andrea thinks it's probably pretty accurate. All right, and Mr. Murphy, I'm going to turn it over to you now.
Great, great. So just in case anybody was worried, we we do have that those tomes. Of budget books will be available on Friday. We're printing out those things. So we'll be. You can pick those budget books up on Friday or we can. You can pick those budget books up on Friday or we can drop them off as needed. So. You you'll have some light reading over the next couple of weeks. This this chart is a chart that really is focused on giving you and the community a sense of. How how the community has supported the school district over the the past years. And really, over the last seven or eight years, that there have been consistent. Expect its increases in our budget and they're they're not necessarily tied to our enrollment trend. So. This is extremely helpful. The budget guidance that the all departments receive. Of two point three percent increase has been met over the past years and and I'll get into a little bit more detail. Of how we're requesting a little bit more than that this year to cover some operational costs, but. The town that has been very supportive of the schools over the years. Next slide. Yeah. The next two slides, the big blue area on the next two pie charts is really what to focus on and. You all know this, but the making sure that the overall community knows this. The the source of funds, the 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 money that the schools use, the vast majority of that money. Comes from the town's allocation to the school district. And and within that fifty fifty-odd million dollars. That also includes chapter seventy funds, which is the primary state. Aid to support schools and for the Falmouth schools. It will probably be this year, the governor hasn't presented a budget yet, but Falmouth's share will probably be about seven million dollars. So that's seven million dollars is. Embedded in the town allocation. It goes to the town and then is part of the overall town allocation to the school district. This that that percentage of chapter seventy versus the town's allocation is is very different in other communities and other. Especially communities that that are not as well off as Falmouth. And I just wanted to again reiterate that the the town has been supporting the schools. Next slide. And then that big blue area there shows that what we all know that that the vast majority of the money. Eighty-two percent or more goes to fund our staff. We we don't we don't build widgets or anything like that. We we educate children and that's a staff intensive work. And that's what we use the money for. So when we're building. A a budget and especially a budget that starts in July. And then goes through June of twenty twenty-three. We have to identify a couple of assumptions and what are the assumptions and realities that we have to work with? One, we've we've been able to. Rely on the town that that the increases to the school's budget have been reliable and in allowed us just to. To sustain our programs. What we're really talking about here, though, is that we're talking about a maintenance of services budget. So there we're not. As the superintendent pointed out, we're not looking for significant new programmatic efforts, but we're also not decreasing or eliminating any programs. However, that doesn't mean that management can just just sort of sit on our hands. Every every spring, management has to make changes that meet the needs of our children. So. And it's really driven by enrollment trends and the needs of children based upon enrollment trends primarily. So. The the line that I've used over and over again is if we have two third basemen and we need a first baseman. We have to ask one of the third basemen to come play first, and that's what happens in schools. And hopefully folks that need to be moved around do have the qualifications to to. Handle the the other position, but if not, then we have to find new people. Are some of the budget busters that other school districts are faced with? We've done a nice job in maintaining and controlling those costs out of district tuition costs, which are some of our most challenged and most expensive. Students who are being served by by residential programs or collaborative programs. Those I do, over and over again, I do have to complement our special education staff, some of our programs in our schools and our student services. Department that the work that is done to sort of control and maintain those costs really happens. Because a lot of people are working together on these things and in providing really high quality programs in the school. So. That's the success for for the children who are served by these programs, so the success for our staff. And our town should be proud of that, too. And then finally, school choice revenue, and that's when, you know, a student from Mashpee or Bourne chooses to come into Falmouth. Come to school in Falmouth and the state allocates. An incremental amount of money to to follow that child. Those funds, we built those up over the past six or seven years and the the number of school choice students over the six or seven years. And they've been vital to helping the district really upgrade our curriculum and our technology and Sonia Tullier. Has done a fantastic job coming up with our our curriculum inventory and in in prioritizing that with our department chairs. And Mike Falcone had has done a fantastic job implementing all the technology that we we've been buying and in, you know. Where we were five or six years ago versus where we are now with technology and curriculum is a huge win for the school district. It's a nice success story. So. Local budget decisions are critical to financial stability. What that means is we'd still have to do the work every year, every spring. Once we understand what the enrollments are going to look like to to allocate resources in the in the in the correct way. It's an annual necessity and you do if you do it every year and. And the management is allowed to do it on a regular basis. You don't have these sort of dramatic fluctuations where. One year you feel like you're losing a bunch of staff. If you 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 just sort of do the work incrementally every year. I've talked about our enrollment trends. The biggest unknown, and we just have to make some guesstimates about this, is that we're in negotiations for FY twenty-three through twenty-six. That's it's a normal process this year. We're we're just beginning it, so we make some assumptions. And guess what? That staff is eighty-two percent of our overall budget, so that that include encompasses that increase encompasses. All the allocation that the town additional allocation that the town provides through the school district. The other thing is that school districts. Specifically Falmouth, this is somewhat unique to Falmouth. Most of our staff are highly experienced. They're they're at step what we call step eleven, top step. And we have very few retirements or resignations. We don't have an unusual amount of resignations this year. We always have about seven or eight percent, seven or eight. Total, not percent. Maybe more like two percent. Retirements every year and and that that's a fantastic things in terms of the experience of the staff, but it also means. That our staff staffing and our staff costs are are relatively expensive. Increased funding from the town only covers existing staff and and any negotiated raises. The only two things that I'd like to highlight right now in terms of next year's budget. Sort of items that are above and beyond that two point three percent allocation and that we're going to, we're asking the town for. Is that our payroll expenses have increased, both in terms of the service costs that we incur. And we had to add an additional staff member. Now, the town makes those decisions. We're a department of the town and they also decided to help fund the the those additional costs. So we were very thankful for that. It was a very logical request for from their perspective, so they're going to help fund that. And then the second thing that we've talked about is that the with the federal pandemic funds are dwindling away. Over the next year and a half, the we need to begin to build into our operating budget. Some of those reoccurring costs for best practices that we've we've developed over the years. So. Disinfectant gel, enhanced HVAC, Merv thirteen filters, additional sanitizing. Of of buildings, probably masks and gloves and those types of things. So I I have included an additional line. In all the building budgets and an additional line in the nurse supplies to handle some of these costs. So. I would I think I spread a hundred and forty thousand dollars in additional funds across the the. Across the line items, across the buildings. Yeah, so so there's some good news out there in terms of what are out of district costs are, what are. What our expectations for inflation look like over the next years and how that might. Impact us. We we're not overly worried next year about utility costs going bonkers or or transportation costs going up. So. So that's fantastic for going into the next year. My next slide. So what does this mean? This means that the number that we're going, the superintendent, this is the superintendent's budget. It's asking the. School committee to approve, then it would become the school committee's budget is a number of fifty-two million nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the fiscal year twenty-three budget, which is a. Two point eight percent increase over the fiscal year twenty-two budget. So I I mentioned to to you that the. Department recommended departmental increase was two point three percent. We're asking for a little bit more than that, an extra two hundred and fifty thousand dollars or so. And that that two hundred and fifty thousand dollars is split between those increased payroll costs and those increased. Pandemic costs, supply costs that I had talked about. So it's pretty straightforward. All the details of the. Sixteen hundred line items you'll get to look over when you get your budget book on Friday. So. More to come.
Great. Thank you so much, Patrick. I'm sure there are a ton of questions. Let me try and. Can we reduce it so we can see that? Just want to make sure you can see any hands that go up here. Perfect. There we are. Okay, I'm I'm not sure if he went first. We'll see Terry.
Now I'm on the budget subcommittee and I should know the timeline, but how long between the books and the vote is there? A month?
Wait, the vote is actually before February vacation this year. So it's like February fifteenth or so.
It's not a month, right?
Yeah, yeah.
And if we go through the book and we have specific questions, you're encouraging us to contact you?
Please.
Leah.
I actually I have I have two questions. One of them is around how because chapter seventy with the Student Opportunity Act, I'm just wondering. What that's going to look like in planning for how we're using our funding?
Yep. So so the stupid. Sorry, the Student Opportunity Act was an extremely important piece of legislation that increased funding to school districts across Massachusetts, across the Commonwealth. However, the priority of how that increased state funding comes to school districts is really a a function of economic need. So Leah, last year, the Student Opportunity Act was beginning to be implemented. And our overall chapter seventy in increase from the state was about was, I think it was eighty-nine thousand dollars. Nothing great, right? So we'll see how this is continues to be implemented by by the state and how aggressively. It's implemented by the state, but by design, Falmouth is not expected to see a significant increase in chapter seventy funding. So the the town makes estimates on what chapter seventy funding will be on on a yearly basis and they they. They're not aggressive in their estimates. So no one has made an aggressive estimate and that is part of the overall budget discussion. That we've had with with the town CFO. Does that help?
So so just to for me to repeat that back in my own mind. So it's that we don't know what that extra. Amount is going to be, but that extra amount will be targeted to specific areas because according to what the Student Opportunity Act is asking. Districts to do, right?
Yeah, if there's if there's some special needs that that need to be met, but but. Our chapter seventy funding is not is not greatly impacted.
Okay.
And and there may be some some discussion about different amounts of money or different funding sources that we're 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 confusing here and maybe we can talk. Offline about that.
Okay, and then my my next question is. This seems to be kind of a general overview of the budget process and I'm wondering if we're going to get. Some idea of like priorities of reallocating funds or where the priorities are more little bit more specifically. In a presentation for for the public and for us.
So so. I'm not sure what additional things would be needed, but the actual decisions that management makes about how to allocate staff really happen. They happen once we have a better understanding of what the enrollment for next year will look like. So we're waiting for our kindergarten enrollment. Come in. Do we know what that's going to look like? By June, we have a pretty good idea. By July or or August, we we have to, you know. Make final decisions on those things. The same thing can be said for our English language learner population and see. See if this is cyclical, if there's some up and down, or if we're continue to see growth and we have to make allocations. To serve those children. You know, so so the the actual reallocation decisions really happen in May, June. In July timeframe.
So I'm just thinking historically that we've had presentations where there's priorities of how the budget. Will be used. And kind of one tier, second tier, third tier we've had in the past. Just giving us a little bit more of a picture of are there any new, you know, positions? Is there a new language program? Are there any like new things that funding's going to? That would be important for us to know, but also for our community to know. So.
And the superintendent, I mean, I I think the superintendent laid out that there was no, there was no really special programmatic efforts. We're we're talking about a maintenance of services budget. I don't want to put words in Lori's mouth, but I lost her on the screen.
Did you want to speak to that? Did you want to?
I mean, he he answered it. Other than the, you know, the one position we presented in December. It's it's a maintenance service. Other than if we need to add an ELD teacher, if we need to add a reading specialist and and that's the data will drive that and that happens in the spring as Patrick said.
Just want to give you an opportunity to respond to the next question.
I just heard that that position is in this, the new a new position is in this budget. Is that right? I know we're going to be discussing that position.
I've seen it. So I I addressed your, when when we are talking about that, I've actually addressed your concerns. That you had before. that you had before about the the actual budget. I could go ahead and speak to that now if you want. So you had asked if we could in the early, you know, year or two as a pilot, could we look for other grants? You and I have talked about that. Unfortunately, I have not found a grant. However, even though we do have it in the budget line that we could add this position, I did hear the concerns and so there are grant or there is additional funds that's going to be coming our way because of the estimated cost for the Upper Cape Tech. And so the town is going to pass on those savings to us. The amount that that is, it would cover the cost of this position for two years. So that's one, another way that we could, even though it is built in the budget and we could do that, it could pay for it out of the budget, but we were trying to listen to you in December and address those concerns.
And just to clarify, the position that Lori is referring to for the public who may not be aware is that is on our agenda is the food justice job description. So that is the job description that Lori is referencing, just for clarification. And Bill Dorfner, you had your hand up.
I I had the same questions y'all just answered. I was wondering if this food justice position was baked into that.
Okay, great. Thank you. I thought I saw another hand raised. Kelly, yes.
So my question actually comes from something that I I think Laura, you mentioned earlier was that we had to put on hold the Portuguese language program. And, you know, we were all so excited about the prospect of bringing Portuguese the elementary schools when it first came up as a as a budget priority and then everything went chaos and we had to put it on hold, which I totally understand. But is that, is there a, like in a list of priorities, the plan to add that back again in coming years? Because you said it's not in this one, right?
Correct. So we would look, there's a couple of different factors. It's also, you know, bringing, it's the availability of bringing someone to Falmouth that is a, if you, if we can think back, we were working with the Portuguese consulate in securing someone that would be available to teach. So we had a multi-year plan of, you know, starting with kindergarten and first grade the first year, adding a teacher the second year and moving up through the grades. And so at this time, that's still going to take time and that's not been necessarily available to us right now through COVID. And so I I do plan to get back to that and would like to start that for the following following school year. And that'll give us more time to plan and work to begin that process.
Okay, thank you.
Any, oh, Andrea.
Yeah, I guess I'm still thinking about this prize of the additional ELL students in December and which is fabulous. And so they, but then the need to put in an actual additional halftime person, how does that part happen in relation to the budget? Like, how does that shifting happen or how, where does that money get pulled from? Because I'm sure that this is just an example of something like that that would happen on a regular basis.
So when you do the budget planning and staffing, you you would never give out every single position that's possible because you may have those needs come up. So, you know, Patrick does a great job budgeting and knowing that, you know, if we need a an extra teacher here, an extra position, we have those built in because we have to always assess the needs throughout the school year. The same as we are budgeting, hopefully we'll have two hundred and fifty kindergarten. We won't know that, but we have the budget for it because I would love to have a two years in a row of a large number. So there's always some positions that are kind of built in that you have to, it has to be there, otherwise we wouldn't be able to address student needs.
So our our budget is fairly conservative in that way.
Yes, yes.
Any other questions, comments, or concerns for Patrick or Dr. Dorr? Seeing none, as always, as Patrick offered, if there are any other questions that come to you, you can always reach out to him. He's great about responding to all of our concerns as always and appreciate it. So thank you. So next item on our agenda is to act on policy JB equal educational opportunities. We did a first read during our last meeting, the two changes to the languages. You can see there is a strikeout of the word the and then down there is the addition of class assignments in blue. Dr. Dorr, would I?
Just if anyone has questions, we can move, I think that we talked about it in December. The class assignments was added in as one more way of showing equity across across the classrooms and how assignments are made. That would be the reason for it.
Leah, I see your hand.
When we had read this last time, I asked about immigration status, if that could be included. And I did see that on our job description for the Food Justice Program Instructor, we have a different list, which includes citizenship here. So I was just wondering what happened with, if what happened in the research of adding immigration status or what didn't happen?
I'm kind of looking at Sonia, hoping that your memory is stronger than mine because we talked about it.
We did talk about it. I know.
About it, yeah. And where did we end up with that? Do you remember, Sonia?
Um, just in, going back to the notes as I was drafting the minutes, the conversation was around the this particular phrase and the identities within it were updated as part of the comprehensive policy review with mask and appears consistently across a number of our policies. And I think that when we were having the conversation beyond this policy, that would be a a bigger conversation for us to look across multiple policies through our policy subcommittee work.
Bill Dorfner.
Um, yeah, I have a question as far as follow up. If if this is voted on and passes, what then is the follow up to make sure that staff and administration understand that this policy has been changed? The reason for the changes and what it entails?
Thank you, Bill, for the question. So the school administrators, central office staff have already begun those conversations, assuming that this would pass. The next step would be I will send a memo to all the principals and they will reiterate that to all the staff. And and then moving forward, I I will say with the administrators, we do not get requests from families for certain classrooms. That's just not been the experience of the the administrators, but I do believe everyone understands the value of adding this and making sure it's clear. And so and then that that will be, if that ever should happen from from anyone, as far as a parent of a student requesting or as a staff member requesting, it'll point back to this policy and my memo that that is not the case.
Thank you.
Okay, is there a motion to approve policy JB equal educational opportunities?
Make that motion.
Okay, motion by Bill, seconded by Terry. Oh, Terry, did you have a question? Is that a second?
No, a second.
Perfect. Okay, thank you. So we have the second on the table. We'll start with you, Terry.
Natalie, I just, we can open for discussion, right?
Yes.
Okay, because I just, I would like for us to add immigration status and so I I thought I made that clear last time, but I'm going to state that again, so.
Kelly.
Um, so I had tried to raise my hand earlier because I remember this conversation, Leah, from a really long time ago that we were talking more generally about adding immigration status to the language that appears in all the policies and and the materials that like when you send a nonprofit sends materials home and things like that, at job descriptions that they all match. And so I was going to ask that, I know policy, I, God, I hate even asking you guys to do anything, but that we could at least look into this because I recognize that it's not a change we would want to make to just this one policy. We would want to, we want everything to be the same. And so if it's worth adding immigration status to this policy, then we should be adding it to all of them and making it standardized across across all of our materials. So I just wanted to follow, I was going to say that at the end after we voted that I would like to ask policy to reconsider that language and, you know, if we can just, I realize it's a big ask, but I just wanted to throw it out there because I think it's worth, I think it's worth it.
I I just think that I should explain why I think this is so important. And, you know, in our civil rights laws and in how we work as a school district, we are not legally blinded to not ask immigration status and to not discriminate against immigration status. And I think that this is a perfect place to put this in, so we're being very explicit around that. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Andrea.
Kelly, I'll just add to that. It's it's not, thank you for thinking of this, the subcommittee, but it isn't too much to ask for that. And one of the things that we had to do, and I'm losing track of time, but a couple of years ago, was address all of our different non-discrimination clauses because they were different across all of our policies. So I think what I would propose is that we take it back and look to do, because we know now which ones are are all linked and look at it comprehensively. So we don't get into that problematic state that we were in before where they look different everywhere.
Yeah, and and I would add the procedures too, you know, because it's it's not just policy.
Absolutely. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any other comments? Okay, seeing that it's going to be a roll call of votes, Lisa, starting with you.
Lisa Hart, yes.
Leah.
I actually, I'm not quite sure how to vote on this. I I would like for it to go back to policy for revamping of the statement. So I guess it's a no.
Okay, yep. And I do appreciate the fact that we, the idea of looking at all of our policies comprehensively, so they're not the one off. So I hear what you're saying, but I definitely like that the longer range of being consistent with our policies. Kelly.
Welch, yes.
Terry.
Terry, yes.
Bill Dorfner.
Bill Dorfner, yes.
Melissa Keith.
Melissa Keith, yes.
Bill Ryder.
Ryder, yes.
And Natalie Kinalapa is also a yes. So thank you. So that policy passes. Next is act on food justice job description. Again, this position was introduced in our December meeting and I will turn over to Dr. Dorr.
Thank you. While we're promoting Mr. St. Julian, I just want a little introduction here again. This food justice program is a unique program and it's one more step in reaching our equity goal. Students will be learning about sustainable management and utilization of natural, natural resources, environmental stewardship, poverty, inequalities, hunger and bound nutrition, and the effects of climate change on agriculture. This program reflects the values of our Falmouth community. Farming Falmouth has been actively engaged in creating open plots for community members to grow and harvest their own food and the students will have the opportunity to also grow and create their own gardens. The students will be connecting with our community partners. They will be learning about our Falmouth land directly from the Wapamaw tribe and students will also learn about the Cape Bird culture from our Cape Birdian community partners. There are many career choices students may connect with by engaging in this program, such as local farming and marketing, public policy, food services and public health and nutrition. Equally important, students will learn a lifelong skill and appreciation for available healthy food. So at this time, I would ask if there's any questions. Mr. St. Julian, Dr. Talia and I are available to answer any questions.
Bill Ryder.
The point four was equivalent to thirty thousand dollars, correct?
Correct.
And we're essentially trying to gain those dollars and cents through what the town thinks or the town management thinks or the district thinks in reference to Upper Cape Technical School that we may get additional dollars to cover.
Correct.
But my feeling is if we get additional dollars, wouldn't it be better to utilize those dollars because we're losing ESER monies? We're going to be dropped in positions. We may need another ELL position. And obviously with mental health and support services, I just think those dollars can be used more appropriately with the needs of our kids, especially with pandemic, with ELL, with support, with guidance, with additional anything to support kids. So I really have concerns about this.
Patrick wants to address. Mr. Ryder.
I'm not sure what you weren't, wanted me to address.
I don't.
The additional, the additional CV, the additional monies, let's say sixty to seventy thousand dollars that we believe are coming based upon the, but the reduction in students going to, the estimated reduction in students going to Cape Tech. It's kind of a natural sort of almost a one to one allocation to put them towards a CBT type, not exactly, but a CBT style program. So there is some logic there, but I, you know, I do understand your concern about other needs.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Leah.
Um, I I just, I've got to echo Bill there. I I'm just, I'm concerned that there's going to be other needs that we're going to have within our district and not seeing that there's other priorities right now, but knowing that we are going to lose funding that we have been getting used to with ESER and around the concerns that Bill brought up. I I am concerned about funding a new position without knowing yet how successful this program will be without having it be grant funded and being able to pilot it and then be able to build a program that way. I'm I'm concerned about putting.
Bill Dorfner.
Yeah, I kind of want to echo that as well. First of all, I think this is a really cool concept for a program. I I think it's it's a it's a cool idea as something, you know, that that could be offered in another way. I think food justice is extremely important for for students to understand. I just, I feel like it could be done within the curriculums or within the structures that we already have, especially given the unknowns that we have moving forward. And I guess one of my biggest concerns was when the presentation was made. There hadn't really been a whole lot of, there hasn't, hadn't really been a whole lot of research or surveys put out or something to see if the students were even interested. This wasn't a like a like a groundswell of student support that wanted something like this. So I I think to take this on right now is cool of us an idea as I think it is. I I've got some concerns as well.
Any other questions? I see. Let's see. There is, oh, Kelly.
So one of my, I I agree with you, Bill. I I think it's an amazing idea. I love all the components of the, you know, the concept of the project. And I also really, I I was, I'm very hesitant to add a position to the budget, but I appreciate Patrick's explanation that it does sort of make sense to use Upper Cape Tech money, unspent Upper Cape Tech money for something that's. for something that's sort of a CVTE kind of project. So all that being said, I'm wondering if we were able to survey students in the, you know, four weeks of chaos since our last meeting, and, and if they, you know, if they demonstrated the, the same enthusiasm that we had. I actually have another question too, but I'll just pause. So Mr. St. Julian, maybe you would know?
For the survey, surveying people?
Yeah.
So, well, first of all, I, I'd like to thank you for allowing me to come and speak. And I apologize that I wasn't there for the beginning discussion. I wish I was there for that. So I would say for numbers, we, we always implement new courses at the high school, and there's, there's a blueprint plan for that, where we will talk to guidance to make sure the numbers are there. We're going to talk to students. We'll have different panel sessions with students. And surveying students is, should definitely be part of the analysis. So I, I think that all of those things come into play. And I also know that if we don't have the numbers, the, the course doesn't run for a semester, you know. So it's not something like, oh, we're just gonna run it. Right? I think we will do our due diligence to make sure that there's enough students, like we do with any other course, and then make sure that it's filled. If it's not, wait for next semester or the next year. So I, I don't think we're, we want to waste anyone's money or any of that kind of stuff. But I, I will say this, this came out of community efforts. I'm just so impressed by community members coming together and saying, this is something that our, our community should do, and our, our community should support. So I, I love when community members come in and say, let's do something. And I, I hear everyone saying that the social justice is an important piece. And I just, I feel like this is a good time, you know, for this. This is a solid time. But you know, the, the finances does dictate stuff. So I definitely rely on your analysis on that. But I, I, I think this is a good time, especially when people are dealing with social emotional needs. They're always looking for an outlet, like what can I do? Going into and helping others is a great outlet for some students. I had a, I had a student today was so dealing with an injustice, and, and the student was doing it improperly. And I said, oh, I need to focus your attention towards this way. And, and we're like, let's, this is a great access to work on these social, these, these injustice in a positive manner. And I think this would be a fantastic job, a fantastic opportunity for, for students to learn how to do things in a positive manner. So, I don't know, I, I hope I'm, I'm going off the subject, but I hope that, that says that some stuff.
Kelly, before you ask your next question, Chris Brothers had her hand up. And so I was hoping to promote her. I know that she's involved in this program, so maybe she could give you more information as well.
Can I, can I have a follow up for Mr. St. Julian about the blueprint he mentioned?
Yeah.
Yes.
You said that there's like a blueprint for adding new courses. Is that type of student engagement part of that? Where you like solicit their input and the panel thing? Is that sort of part of the process? Or is that, are we asking, did I ask for something extra? Is all I'm wondering?
No, I, I think it's not extra. I mean, my, it's my personal blueprint. But whenever I.
Oh, I got it.
It's my blueprint. So, all right, there's no problem with blueprint. But I, I already seen that I've got a couple of courses, and we know that we have to, A, talk to guidance, get them behind it, kids, a couple panel. And then I, I like the survey. I think the survey is coming from you, from this community. I think that's a positive thing to, to survey the kids. And if, if it goes, it goes. And I'm 100% behind it.
Thank you. That was super helpful. I appreciate the clarification.
I see your hand up, Terry. If I could just allow.
It goes to the same thing that Mr. St. Julian is talking about. It's when you write the, sign up, what do you call that? The course availability? What's the name of that document?
Selection sheet.
Yeah. When is that finalized? And how do you go about that? Because that's part of this process you're talking about.
Yeah, the, the, the exact timeline is being discussed, but usually that comes up around February, and students are doing the, the selection in, in March. So there's going to be a whole, you know, program stays situation. So I think that, that whole process is being lined up as we, as we speak. But, but we have some time. We definitely have some time and make sure that we can get the, the right numbers in there.
Great. Thank you. Chris Brothers, thank you for joining us. If you could add to this conversation.
Actually, I put my hand up because I'm about two items down on the agenda, and I wanted to make sure that Ryan knew I was in the meeting. Wasn't actually to comment on this.
Oh, okay. I apologize. Dr. Dorr said that you're part of this program.
Yeah, Chris has been part of the discussions and part of it. And I, I just thought maybe she may want to add something to this.
Well, that is true. We've had a number of meetings with the people that were involved and thought about whether it should be a CVTE program, or a science program, or maybe even a history program, or where exactly the curriculum fits, because it's very interdisciplinary and could be in any of those areas. And we've looked at things like where we could cite a greenhouse and the greenhouse that we already have. And so, yeah, there's been a lot of planning that's gone into it so far. And I mean, the classes that I teach are, a major component is climate change and agriculture. So, you know, I think it's, I think it's terrific piece to put together.
Thank you. Terry.
Okay, one was my mechanical question. The other one was something that St. Julian, Mr. St. Julian already said was about the community. And I worked with the Wampanoag writing the land acknowledgement, and the Cape Verdean events that I went to for a year long. So I developed a great appreciation for them and the community involvement. But also tonight, we were talking about not having Portuguese. We had to postpone that. And that is about as community as you can get in Falmouth, too. So it kills me that it's such a great idea. But the timeliness of adding it to, it's, it's hard to, at this time, agree to that. Anyway, it's mind boggling, actually.
Melissa, I saw your hand up. Hi there. So I love this idea. I think that it is definitely something new for kids, something refreshing. I love that it came from the community. I think that it's definitely a, a positive during this otherwise negative COVID past two years. I think it's kind of like a light at the end of the tunnel, that there is life after, you know, dark days, of which we've all experienced. I love Mr. St. Julian's analogy of the, the balancing of the social, the social injustice. There's definitely some deep psychology in that, especially for young people, where, you know, sometimes we, as adults, we can go out and socially right wrongs, and, you know, especially during this weird awkward time. But students don't always get that opportunity, especially now. So I think that there's a giant social, emotional piece to that as well. I also think that it's just, it's a really good feel good program. I'm always going to promote anything agricultural in this town, where, you know, as we've all said before, growing up here, seeing the farmlands kind of dwindle down. Tony Andrews Farm is a great example. You know, there's a housing development where there once was farmland, and that's just a little example. So I love having the agricultural piece as well. But I'm torn because of what Terry just said. The Portuguese program that is parked. And I wish that there was a way that we could do both, because it's so, both of them are so very important. You know, Portuguese, this is our, these are, that's, these are our people. These, you know, everyone, when I was growing up, everyone was Portuguese. It was not easy to be that, you know, Irish Catholic kid, Saint Anthony's with a funny last name, or East Thomas. But anyway, I, I wish that there was a way that we could do both. But I, I love, love this program.
So if, if I may address that. So I also love the idea of beginning our Portuguese language. That's why I was making it a priority two years ago. I don't think it's, one's, we can't have both, right? It's just the timing of both. So this one, we're ready to move forward, for all the great reasons that all of you have said. And then we're still planning for the Portuguese language to begin. So I don't want it to be one or the other. I think that both absolutely represents the values of our community. It represents the culture and history of our, our community. And, and so I highly recommend that we have both opportunities for students. And that is what we're trying to do as part of our framework for student success, is to add opportunities for students.
Right. And I would sort of like to echo many of the things that Melissa said, and that this is such a wonderful opportunity for students to learn even more about the history of Falmouth. And it's an interdisciplinary program, and that you're going to study science and math and history, and collaborating with your peers, all of it. And it's hands on. And I think what we hear so much from students is that they wish they had more hands on opportunities. And I can't think of anything more hands on than farming. And it just brings so much value to our students. And I also think, you know, it's important to remember that FEA is giving tremendous support for this program. And so, you know, it's new, but there are many revenue streams to support this program. But, you know, I, I think, I think it's incredible. It's a wonderful opportunity.
But I have, yeah, thank you. And thank you for bringing that up. I did want to speak to the FEA. So we have $100,000 earmarked money that we have to spend by the end of this year. And, and $48,000, what the FEA has agreed, they've been a part of this planning process, that meets all the needs, those additional needs, that upfront costs, the seed money that we need to begin this program. If we do not move forward with this program, at this time, I do not know how we're going to spend the $48,000. And I do not want to lose those dollars. Because we can't add something new that's not already been thought, thoughtfully planned for and planned as a, as a program in our district. $48,000 is, is a lot to figure out how to spend. And we can't just do add-ons here and there. This is part, that $48,000 is part of a very thoughtful program. And so we have to consider that as well, as we're making our decisions.
Bill Dorfner.
Um, Ms. Brothers, thank you for mentioning, you, you know, talk about climate change and that kind of stuff in your classes. That's kind of what I was leading to earlier, is that a lot of this stuff, I think, does, does fit nicely into the classes that are currently offered. Without actually, you know, obviously, the hands on stuff is great. That leads me to one of my other concerns. And that's the, the building of the, the greenhouse and so forth, is there is going to be, you know, maintenance on that, long term maintenance on that, the summertime, who's taking care of it, who's watching over things? I guess those are some questions that I have as well, as far as physically, what, what, if, if this is approved and it goes forward, what are we on the hook long term for, as far as maintenance? And, and, you know, is it going to be dormant during the summer? Or what, what's going on with that?
Henry, would you like to?
Okay, good. Thank you. So we've, we've kind of discussed many opportunities for, for that. We do have summer programs that we want to do. The team, the partnership that we have, we're discussing almost like, almost like a club mentality that, that we could have, like a student club that will take care of it after school and some other, other time. But in the summer, I think there are different opportunities that we've discussed to, to handle that. And, and it will have to be something that will have to be schoolwide discussion. So I can't say this is what we're doing, because we have not got the, our other partners in there. But I, I see students being involved in here year round. Definitely something that's going to be a year round, a project. And, and this is a mean outreach, not only for the high school, but some of the aspect of the program was to branch out to the middle school, to Lawrence, and bringing them as well. So having younger kids being involved as well in the summer would be a paramount. Having this feeder program from Lawrence School would be definitely prudent to have. So I like to add, just real quick, I know this is not the question, but I'm so glad that we are, we are in a discussion between two diverse programs. And I'm kind of, I'm really proud of our community that we are discussing those two. Because I, I love both opportunities, even though I'm speaking on one. So just going to throw that out.
Thank you. Andrea, then Kelly, then Melissa. So Andrea.
Actually, maybe we could start with, because I think Bill's second part of his question was part of one of mine, and that is plans for ongoing costs. Because they are significant, just, you know, maintaining, you know, hoop houses and things that, you know, need to be factored in over the next, you know, three to five years.
Ben, I was gonna say, please promote Ben, because I think he, he can actually speak to that. Although I believe Sonia and Henry could as well, but.
Natalie, while we wait for Ben, that was my question as well. So I'm just gonna put my hand up.
Thank you. Yep, I think he's.
Do you want that?
Yes.
Yes, please promote Ben.
Hey, everybody.
How we doing?
Good, Henry, how are you?
Very good.
I just want to say first, thanks to everyone for the really great questions and the engagement. I'm glad everyone thinks it's a great project. And, you know, to, to the specific question, though, on ongoing maintenance and summer programming, our organization, the Food Justice Initiative, are currently incorporating as a nonprofit. And so our goal is to basically bring together, you know, a group of external folks who can really help promote this program from within and from without, help integrate with the community, you know, fundraise for those ongoing maintenance issues. And also run in collaboration with the schools, you know, summer programming in, in the, in the infrastructure that we have on the site. So, you know, as Henry said, it's a great opportunity to have the high school students be the teachers in summer programs, and to have younger students see the work that they do and get excited about it. There's a kind of natural feeder in there. So I think if you're worried about ongoing maintenance and what's happening in the hoop house in the summer, I think our external organization is actually going to be the kind of spearheads for kind of making sure there's money available. Because this is, this is an opportunity, I think, that a lot of people would like to, you know, have, have a part in. And, you know, FEA have been excited about it. We've had other funds and people interested in it. And I'm sure, you know, the town of Falmouth, the public in the town of Falmouth will also be interested in, you know, a, a topic that kind of sits so squarely in the section of hands on learning and racial justice and environmental and climate change action. So, yeah, I'm happy, I'm here and happy to answer any other questions. But also let you guys have your discussion.
Andrea, you had a follow up?
Yeah, yeah. So I know, I just wanted to finish, let Bill get his question answered. And I guess, you know, hearing this discussion, it, you know, I think what people are struggling with is just the vast amount of needs that we are having right now, and how to plan and budget for that, and making sure that, that we, we leave enough of that margin. And, and again, like I have zero issue with, with the topic. In fact, it's something that I highly support. And, and would even think, I would love to see it expanded much wider than just, you know, a, a small class, right? This is something I could see at many, many different grade levels, and getting those ideas to a wide group of students. And when I hear what people are grappling with, including the things about expending the funds from FEA, making sure that we can figure out how to do this for a long term, we seem to just be having a little bit of a, a timing issue. And I'm wondering if there are ways to. And I'm wondering if there are ways to pilot this program, so that we don't say that this is a definite, just like. We cannot do this now, so we're not going to do it. But are there ways to start to put some of that infrastructure in place to be able to, you know, pilot things through? Some of our social justice groups that we have, the student groups that are already in existence. Start to build on that, so that then we could come back with something at another time to. Create a position, because I think once we create positions, those are things that we want to keep in there that, I think that's the the long-term implications of that. Is kind of what holds people up a little bit. So I guess the questions around piloting it, is there, is there any possibilities there?
Dr. Tyer, would you like to address um, the pilot versus um, a possession?
Um, so, similar to what Henry was describing earlier with regard to the students who. Register for and gravitate to the program, um, it's through. The following that they ultimately build up around the course that makes it sustainable in the longer term. Um, but also, I think that this is building off of momentum from previous uh, grant applications and opportunities that others. Before this team have raised around agriculture at the school. So I think there are um. Smaller scale versions of pilots that have happened when science teachers have partnered with the culinary teacher or. Um, with some of the other uh, educators at the high school, and I think a lot of that's what's contributed to taking it to the scale. Um, but in many ways, the first couple of years are similar to to that trial or pilot as we. Uh, build it out and and work to to grow it and get the solid student enrollment that we're seeking. Um, I also see Chris raising her hand, and I know Chris has been involved in some of those previous opportunities along the way.
Chris, would you like to speak to um, Andrea's question?
Uh, well, I think Sonia just did. I was gonna say, we've had a few pilot programs kind of similar to this. For quite a long time, we had a green skills program where students did gardening and landscaping projects around Falmouth. Um, we had an FEA-funded um, greenhouse that unfortunately, the students built, but unfortunately got blown down in a hurricane. Um, then that was replaced with the greenhouse that we have right now, uh, which was funded through um, private donors. And then um, we've had. Um, I forget the name of this program that Kathleen Justerson used to run with Scott Crocker, but um, it was a basically a student gardening. Um, program, and Scott is still sort of continuing that within um, two of his classes. Um, it's kind of a small-scale thing, and we don't really have a good plan for what to do um, in the summer. So what we have been doing so far. Is basically donating all of the plants to the Falmouth Service Center, and they have gone into the community gardens. Some of the plants also have been used in the multi-age learning program over the summer. And um, some honestly, the students sell to teachers and raise the money to be able to buy more seeds and more soil for the next year. So um, I guess there's been like little pieces and parts of this going on, but nothing that's sort of a. Um, I guess I would say a more coordinated program, and I think what's kind of different about this piece. Is that it also pulls in the social justice, which hasn't, you know, been a part of the program before, but certainly. In the last two, three years, we've all seen that that's something that we really need to, you know, address at this point.
Thank you. Melissa.
Hi, again, um, so, after hearing uh, even more that the FEA is behind this. And thank you, Chris, for the reminder that there's been little pieces along the way, little pockets here and there. Um, like at the elementary schools, East Falmouth Elementary has an outdoor classroom and it, there's outdoor gardens there as well, and. There were many talks around, um, when we were building that. You know, the principal at the time was very concerned with, you know, how is this, what's gonna happen in the summer, who's gonna manage it, who's gonna weed it? You know, she didn't want it to be a burden on the staff and teachers, and honestly, it's really, um, it's it's had, we've had a. I say we, it was years ago that I was there, but uh, we had subcommittees and little subgroups, and now it's really blossomed and taken off. And, you know, the students learn about um, natural plants and they learn about all the things and. To to have an opportunity of money that we have to spend that we, and we don't have another. Uh, not that we don't have another viable plan, but if this is what we were. Um, and this is ready to go, unlike the Portuguese program, although I I love, love it. Again, I don't wanna discredit it. But if we have a program that's so amazing like this, ready to go, we have supportive FEA, and we have lots of support along. The way that we didn't even really plan on having, this really sounds like. It 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 sounds like we should just do it. I I mean, I don't know how else to um. To, I don't know how else, how much more I could encourage it and support it and. Um, I really, I think it's really important right now, quite honestly, and I think that there's a lot of things to support it.
Thank you, Melissa. Leah.
Um, so, I mean, I know I I'm always saying, I I love this idea, I really do. I think what's what's so hard for me is this aspect of not knowing where our biggest needs are going to be in a district. And putting funds into a new position for a new program, um, when we might need the funds for something. That's more um, broad with within our schools. I wanna highlight something that um, Bill keeps on kind of going back to around embedding this within our schools and. And I think that, you know, I, I love the idea of a pilot to plant a seed. And then to grow into um, more. Sustainable curriculum that can be developed throughout, because right now we're looking at just a a small. Very small percentage of our students being able to access something like this. And so that also puts this kind of fiscal responsibility piece on my shoulders that I'm thinking of. Like, what if we have these other needs that we we need to reach and we've now put it on a program that we. We haven't seen yet the success of it, though it sounds absolutely wonderful. The just, the the food justice aspect of it, the bringing in all of our local um, agriculture and history. So key. Um, but I'm just, I'm I'm really torn and I feel like. I feel like I'm put in a really, really hard spot right now as a school committee member, because. I understand we have this grant funding coming, but I didn't know about that until this position was put out to us when we didn't have any. Background about it. So, my question is. That funding that FEA has given us, would we be able to use that funding to promote some pilot aspects of this program? But not be, go gung ho and put the position into our budget, because I'm. The concern fiscally of maybe needing to put that someplace else. Would it, we be able to use that funding in a little bit of a different way to provide at least the start and plant the seed of this program?
So we would have to go back to FEA. I mean, they approved the forty eight thousand. We have not. There's forty nine thousand left, but we are still um, in the planning stages. Uh, so, is there an opportunity um, that they would fund more and fund the position for the first year? Um, I mean, that would be this, you know, we'd have to go back to the table and have that as part of the discussion. Um, Patrick, I don't know if you wanna address, um, you know, I I hear what the concerns are that. Uh, we won't be able to meet student needs uh, with positions that we might need because of this. Um, but I really see that as two separate um, issues, and we, we do budget for for the needs of our students, so I don't know. You want, want to add anything, Patrick?
I mean, uh, the processes that we use aren't going to change every, every um. Every spring, so um, there, we're in a good position. Now financially because of our ability to also tap Esther dollars for sort of unexpected or unseen needs. Uh, for next year, so um, you know, we do have wiggle room. In addition to our local budget with Esther dollars going into next year also, so that that would be sort of the the difference. Going into next year is that Esther dollars give us more wiggle room uh, to meet sort of those. Those needs that we don't even know what they are right now.
Uh, Kelly.
Um, so I guess my, I I don't even know if this is possible. Patrick, you might know, is it possible to approve a job description? With um, like time parameters on it, so, because what I'm hearing is that everybody really wants this. We would just have preferred to have it um, as a, as a pilot program or as, you know. Not absorbing the immediate cost into the operating budget. Can we say, like, we're gonna approve this job description with a two-year limitation and it would need to come back to us? Or is that not something we're allowed to do?
So job descriptions are just, you know, over the years, job descriptions have been approved. Uh, and if they're needed, that we continue to use them. If if uh, if they're not needed, they sort of, they become. They kind of sit on the shelf, right? So, so um, I don't think, just because we have a jo- job description approved. If something changes, you know, Henry, Henry was very honest about, you know, we're we're gonna be signing kids up. He believes kids are gonna sign up, but if kids aren't gonna sign up, then, you know, you reality, you look at something. You look at something different. So, you know, there's no harm in approving a a job description now, because the. Ultimately, the kids are gonna vote.
So I guess, um, I guess that's, okay, so now I have a different question, and. It was my understanding that by approving the job description, we're approving the creation of that position in the budget.
No, no, not not necessarily. The superintendent has has uh, has asked me to put the money in the budget. The job description, because it's something very new, is uh, is something that needs to get approved. If the, so I guess there could be two, two scenarios, right? The, the, uh, if the, assuming the job description is approved, there's money in the budget, then. Uh, then we we go forward if if kids uh, are ready to support the program and sign up for the program. What, what I would suggest is that you don't want to get into the nitty-gritty details of of saying. I I want this thirty thousand dollars in the budget for this purpose, as opposed to this thirty thousand dollars in the budget for that purpose. That's not something that the school committee would get in to, so, so just focusing on on whether or not you think this budget, this. This job description is reasonable and and could be approved at this time. Uh, if you do, and and you uh, also understand that the superintendent would like to move forward with this. And you're comfortable with that, then um, we just move this forward. Um, I'm not sure. I apologize if.
No, you're, that made perfect sense. And so I have a follow-up, Natalie, if it's okay.
Let's let Terry jump in first, and then we can do your follow-ups, because she's been waiting. Just hang on one sec, Kelly. Terry.
Um, first of all, I don't believe, I believe if we approve the job description. And accept it, then we have to approve the position. I think we've run into that before. I think we need to check that out. Um, I just wish we had a little more timeline about the kids. Um, and I'm wondering, we're adults, the FEA is adults. Um, we see the the um, country from an adult's point of view. Kids don't. Also, having been a high school teacher, you can't always rely on kids. You, I love them dearly, but you can't rely on them, and a lot of them have summer jobs. So you can't say, oh, they're gonna do that in the summer. They may be philosophically motivated, but if they wanna buy some new Nike sneakers, they're gonna go to work. So, um, it's a great idea, but I just think it's a little bit rushed, and we're making decisions without the kid. I wish we could just put this off until we see how many kids sign up. Um, but I really think we should investigate voting on this job description, because I think it means that we have to accept it.
Okay, so, and the superintendent would like to address your comments.
Right, I'm I'm just gonna um, echo what um, Patrick had said about your approving a job description. Whether we put that job description in play is actually um, our decision uh, as management. And here's just an example. When we had um, the uh, MOA with the Woods Hole Partnership. And we came to you uh, to approve a job description for the uh, learning special, learning partnership specialist. Um, you approved that that job description, and I had decided to hold back on that because it wasn't the right timing. And so we uh, waited a year before we put that in place. So I just wanna remind that we do have the opportunity, if we do not have the number of students signing up for this course. That we will make that decision not to hire the person, right? There's gonna be logical steps. So um, Henry and our partners uh, will um, share information with our students about the program. It's gonna be in the the uh, the job or the um, uh, course catalog. And students will have an opportunity to sign up. If we do not fill the first section, which is all we're trying to start, it's one, it's one section starting next fall. Then, then we will not hire someone for that position, and then we may try, we may do some more um, advertising. We might look at second semester, we might look for the year after, as uh, as uh, Mr. St. Julien had mentioned. Uh, when he spoke, so approving the job description does not mean we have to do the program.
And Kelly, you had a follow-up?
Yeah, my question was very much along um, those same lines as to the timing of it, so. Um, once we approve the job description, we can, we can fill the position anytime we want. But I just wanted to make sure that I understood that it wasn't gonna be filled until next year, because it's next year's budget. Correct?
Yes, yes. Um, Terry, did you have another question? Your hand is still up? Okay, perfect. In, you're muted, so I'm not sure what else you're saying. Uh, Leah.
So, I I understand that aspect of, um, so the job description is a separate piece. Um, but I am concerned because something that was mentioned by Dr. Dorr was around the FEA. Funding and that that needed to be used, so, so I don't really look at them as separate now. I look at it as, if we approve this. This really is moving forward, because those FEA grant, that grant needs to be used, and we need to move forward on it. So um, I'm thinking it's a little bit more complicated than. Because this other funding is involved.
Um, Melissa. Melissa, your hands up?
All right, yep, I was trying to unmute myself, um. It's okay to be spontaneous. We have the funding, we have. If if it, this is just for a job description, this is, we're just approving a job description. And if it happens, that's amazing. And if the kids want it, and we have FEA support. I, I don't, it really sounds like a no-brainer. I don't. I know, I appreciate Terry saying that, you know, the kids, you can't always rely on the high school kids. I I totally get that. Um, but the, a lot of the kids that have essentially grown up with. Gardens in their backyard and gardens in the backyard of their school are, that's where their mindset is. This isn't. For a lot of people, this isn't like a trendy thing. This is just a part of their life, and if we can encourage that. I think, to, you know, to carry on through high school, I think it's really a good idea, and I. I feel like this is a lot of chatter for a job description, but I digress.
Um, any other questions or comments, Andrea?
I'm hesitating, because I've been taking this all in and trying to figure out, like, especially with what Melissa was just saying, like. Why is there so much just discussion over a job description? And I think it's because we consistently hear at these meetings and from our community about. All the 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 needs that are in place, or that are, that exist in our schools. And I think as these things get presented to us, and we have the ultimate fiscal responsibility for the budget for the schools. I think it's this idea of getting a real good sense um, based on needs assessment of. of everything that we need so that we can prioritize. So it's not just whatever happens to come in at a certain fortuitous time gets it. And then because if we're putting funds toward that, there may be other things that will never get the funds just because there's not a certain amount of backing. And I'm not saying that that's what's happening. I'm saying I think that that's probably what some of us are feeling is saying, okay, if we say yes to this, what are we saying no to that we don't know we're saying no to? Right? So I think that that's why there's a struggle here and such a long discussion over something that in theory, everybody supports because we don't know what we may be saying no to by saying yes to this. Right? And and I hear that. And I think what I have, my takeaway is that there is in the budgeting process that wiggle room for those unknowns to take care of those as well. So you know, from my perspective, it's not one or the other. It's the capacity to do both. And in this case, both is can be achieved because we do have external support from many stakeholders of the community. So I absolutely hear that. Um, but you know, my takeaway is that we can do both and and we are serving um the social emotional needs of students through this program as well. Um, so I think that this program can do so many things that things that are really, really important to this community and are at this committee. So um are there any other questions or comments? Okay, seeing.
Um, Natalie, I I just, I do have a comment about the, just a technical comment about the job description because the E O E, the, I guess, equal opportunity
Yep.
um, is definitely of different than what we have in our policies. So I just wanted to note that. Um. So just that should be aligned to what we have in our policies.
Thank you. Uh, Bill Dorfner.
I just want to go back to something from our last meeting and and I think this is why some of us are are struggling as much as we are with an idea that we all seem to think is is a great idea. Um, but my understanding is this concept came out and I asked about this last meeting was that the this concept first started coming out spring of this past school year before school let out. And the first I heard of it, and I believe the first anybody from the committee has heard about it, was last meeting. And we are now in a position where we're looking at juggling the vote on a job description, um where to spend grant money, where to, you know, put a point for position, trying to make sure that we're doing the right thing. Um, looking at uh programs that we've looked at bringing up in the past, like the Portuguese program. And and I think that's, that's the biggest struggle that I have is we, this has been in the works for a long time and we've had one shot at looking at this and making a vote. And I just want to put that out on the record um that I think that's, that's one of my biggest struggles with this. And um I hope I'm not speaking out of turn, but I think that may be a struggle for others as well.
And and thank you for that. And and I absolutely respect your opinion and I I would just say I I would hate to um not approve a program over the timeline. But I do think it is important going forward to, it sounds like the committee needs to be looped in a little sooner so that we're not feeling like we have to make this decision um in just two short meetings.
Well, and and I think the timeline is one of the problems. I mean, I I've brought, a few people have brought that up is is the the specific word timeline is is the the timeline is the struggle that, you know, we wish we knew how to plan forward and 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 where we could allocate our funds and when we need to spend the funds. And so um, you know, that that was brought up by other members tonight was that the the timeline um of this, we we wish it was different as well. And I I think something could have been done about that earlier this spring.
Um, to, uh Terry.
Um, I I'm thinking of what Andrea said. I want to say yes to this, but if I'm saying yes to this, what am I saying no to? I mean, there's just, we're not, we're only looking at this one thing, not a lot of other things. So it's it's just really difficult.
Yeah, yeah, no, and I do, I hear that. I would just sort of go back to, you know, where the planning process is creating buffers in our budget. Um, and I and I think that if we don't say no when we have an opportunity, then we will never, you know, grow in programming. Um, but we have definitely had very thoughtful discussion on this. So is there a motion to approve um the food justice job description? I make a motion. Melissa makes the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
And Lisa seconds. And it's going to be a roll call vote. Um, everyone just moved on my screen. I apologize. Uh, Bill Dorfner.
Uh reluctantly, no.
I'm Melissa Keith.
Melissa Keith.
Yes. Uh, Lisa.
Lisa Hart, yes.
Uh, Kelly.
Welch, yes.
Terry.
I'm gonna abstain.
Just writing notes there with me here. Okay, Leah.
Um, so Leah Palmer, no. But not because of this program, just because of not knowing what I don't know.
Uh, Bill Dor, uh Bill Ryder, excuse me.
Uh Ryder, no.
Andrea?
Andrea Thorold, yes.
And I am also a yes. Uh, with the exception, it has. Very, thank you very much. Thank you for the very thoughtful conversation. Okay, moving on to something far less contentious. Um, and act on a $500 donation from the Ray Kenny Classic.
Doctor, yes, so this is a $500 donation from the Falmouth Taxi to Boys Hockey um to pay for the ice time during the hockey tournament. This check was received after uh the December 14th um school committee meeting.
Okay, is there a motion to accept the very generous donation of $500 from the Ray Kenny Classic?
Can I please make the motion? Mr. Kenny was my principal.
I had the same thought, Melissa, so.
I loved him and he, he was an icon and I know it's a lot of discussion, but.
He was great. He was, you know, same thing, EFES, he was a wonderful principal. So I appreciate that. So Melissa has the motion. Is there a second?
A second.
Leah Palmer, second and roll call. Uh, again, we moved, yeah, Bill Dorfner.
Dorfner, yes.
Melissa Keith.
Melissa Keith, yeah.
Lisa Hart.
Lisa Hart, yes.
Kelly.
Welch, yes.
Carrie Maderis.
Yes.
Leah.
Leah Palmer, yes.
Bill Ryder.
Ryder, yes.
And Natalie Keanalab was also a yes. So thank you again so much for the generous donation. Um, next, act on $500 donation from the John Wesley United Methodist Church.
Yeah, so this um donation uh was um to our guidance for annual collection for needy families, um to purchase gifts or gift cards. Um, this check was also received after our December 14th uh meeting.
Great. Is there a motion to accept the $500 donation from the John Wesley United Methodist Church?
Motion to accept.
Motion, thank you. Bill Dorfner, seconded by Bill Ryder. Uh, roll call, vote. Uh, Bill Dorfner.
Dorfner, yes.
Melissa.
Melissa Keith, yes. Thank you, John Russell.
Exactly. Lisa.
Lisa Hart, yes.
Kelly.
Welch, yes.
Carrie.
Yes.
Leah.
Leah Palmer, yes.
Bill Ryder.
Ryder, yes.
Andrea, yes.
And I am also a yes. Thank you so much for your generous donation. Uh, next, act on science field trip. Um, and Dr. Dor.
Uh, yeah, so Chris Brothers is with us here tonight uh about the field trip. Uh, this uh is a uh within our partnership with uh MBL. Uh, and it is a opportunity for our students to um to learn and stay within uh the MBL uh opportunities. Chris, I, instead of me going on, you can probably describe it much better. Would you like to take over?
Sure. Um, this is actually a program that we started two years ago with the Marine Biological Laboratory. And unfortunately, it was scheduled for the first week in April and you know, in March 13th, um, the world changed. So unfortunately, we had to cancel um the program two years ago. Um, we are hopeful that we'll be able to hold it this year. Um, a number of other sort of residential programs like the um ASLP group program that our students are involved in at Mass Maritime um are being held, we think, this summer. Were held um last year. Um, so we're hopeful that we can participate this year. I should say that MBL has um a very generous donor who has funded this program for um a number of schools on the Cape. Uh, we were going to be the pilot school um two years ago, but since then, um Falmouth Academy and Barnstable High School and Cape Cod Academy have all, and I believe maybe Bourne is participating in this as well. Um, there's about five or six schools on the Cape now that are going to be part of this program. Some of the um courses have already run during the fall um with no issues. So it's a three-day course that our students can participate in um at no cost. The plan is that they will live on the MBL campus in the dormitories. They will each have their own bedroom and their own bathroom, which was one of the um questions that came up, you know, for COVID protocols. Um, and the point of the course is they'll be learning about CRISPR uh gene editing um techniques. And they basically are going to inject zebrafish embryos with um uh let's say an enzyme that edits the genes in the embryo and they're going to be able to see in the course of three days um the effect on the eye development and pigment development in the zebrafish. Um, because the embryos develop very quickly and they'll be learning some advanced microscope techniques and imaging techniques to be able to um document that they uh were successfully able to manipulate the genes um in these organisms. And there will also be a number of lectures by the um MBL staff, including the director of the lab. Um, and also some discussion of the ethical um piece around, you know, is this a technology that we should be using and how? Um, so that's basically what the course is about. Uh, the students will be um excused from school uh because it's considered an academic program for them. We can take between 12 and 14 students and we're right now in the process of getting applications um from the students. Um, after we select them, there is a registration process and they have to get um doctors, you know, permission and parent permission and so forth. So you approved this two years ago and I'm hoping that you'll approve it again tonight.
Thank you. Any questions? Yeah, sorry, Andrea. So is, you are mentioning all the other um schools that are participating. Are they participating within the same timeframe or will this be exclusive to Falmouth students in these, on these eight weeks?
Okay, good question. It will actually be exclusive, so only our students will be there on campus during that week. Um, actually, it's only three nights. It's Sunday, Monday and Tuesday night and they'll start midday on Sunday and finish midday on Wednesday.
And then they, um, this, the stipulation that I see added on here at the end. Um, it says a day program or overnight. And so is that ju- determined by what MBL will be doing at the time? Or what 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 will trigger one way or the other?
Um, so originally, this program was envisioned as an overnight program because they're trying to give the students sort of a, you know, campus college sort of experience. Um, with COVID, um, Mrs. Gans was a little concerned about um the accommodations and students staying on campus. So her um uh stipulation on this was that if students were provided with individual um housing, um bedrooms and bathrooms, so they weren't sharing facilities and and bedrooms, that it could be approved as a, or she approved in any way as a overnight program. We, in the meantime, had some discussion with MBL, would we be able to run it as a day program if it didn't get approved for an overnight program? And they didn't prefer that, but they did agree um to do that. And they in fact think that students may be safer if they come and stay the full three days on campus and not be going home to families and and friends each night and then coming back the next day. So I'm not sure who, you know, who or how we'll decide that, but um we have the opportunity of running it either direction depending on what the school committee um wants to approve.
Great, thanks. Is there a motion? Oh, Leah, you had a quick question?
Yeah, just uh looking at the application process. So it was um an essay and then a teacher recommendation. Is that correct?
Yes.
From this, their science teacher, is that right?
Correct.
And is there a cost associated with this?
No, it's totally, it's totally free because MBL has um a donor that is funding the program.
Okay, okay.
It's a quite expensive course, actually. So I mean, it's pretty phenomenal that they're doing this for us.
It sounds very exciting. So um the only um just piece, just moving forward is i- it looks like the deadline was today for the application. Is that right?
Um, that's right. And then the teacher um recommendations are due on Friday.
Okay, okay. So maybe if we can get you in at least like one school committee ma- meeting ahead of, so you have a little bit more time. So you know it's approved before the application.
Right, I agree. We're working on a pretty um tight timeline once um MBL kind of reopened the courses. And because they have a fair amount of schools that are participating, um, we basically only had one week that we could um get registered for and then working back from that, you know, we need to leave enough time for the registration process.
Okay, well, that's, that's understandable this year for sure. Um, they.
Okay, is there a motion to approve um the science field trip? Melissa makes the motion. Is there a second? And and Andrea seconded. Um, and it's a roll call vote. Bill Dorfner?
Dorfner, yes.
Melissa?
Melissa Keith, yes.
Lisa, Lisa Hart, yes.
Kelly.
Welch, yes.
Carrie.
Carrie Maderis, yes.
Yeah.
Leah Palmer, yes.
Bill.
Ryder, yes.
Andrea Thorold, yes.
And Natalie Keanalab was also a yes. So thank you so much. Sounds like a wonderful opportunity for our students.
Okay, thank you very much for approving that.
Take care. Uh, next, up, update on superintendent goals.
Yes, thank you. Ryan, can you put the presentation up, please? Oh, okay, thank you. All right, so goal one uh is the implement district of school plans for re-engaging all students in full-time, in-person learning in safe and healthy uh school environments. Uh, in the packet, I'm not going to go over all the administrative standards, um but they're there for you. Especially at nine o'clock at night.
Exactly.
You can thank me there. All right, so the measures, um, uh, just so you know, it's the ongoing planning with the principal's uh central office. Um, we had uh two uh meetings a month at central office, individual uh meetings two times a month. Um, and we have um administrative council one time a month uh scheduled. We've had three additional meetings through the fall and uh principals uh once a month uh face-to-face scheduled and then additional uh meetings uh as scheduled. So uh it has uh been the uh focus of the priority and focus of uh our meetings this year. So um key actions. So uh we have the reconnecting with students in full-time in-person learning, increasing student engagement, increasing uh student growth and achievement, ensuring students' social emotional needs and following the health and safety protocols. Um, the in-person uh was uh important that when we came back, we were building relationships. We were taking time to re-engage students uh with their classroom expectations, with academic and behavior. To reteach students how to engage in collaborative learning uh has been a a major focus um because it had been 18 months before students were face-to-face and allowed to work with one another. Um, reinstate the district-wide and school expectations for work completion and attendance. If uh you remember last year, um, we were uh much more lenient uh on all of that as we were trying to work through um the hybrid and the amount of students that were um in and out of uh school for various reasons, but obviously COVID being one of them. So there were many things that we needed to um uh re-establish in the school um process. So there were many things that we needed to reestablish in the school process. We added outdoor opportunities, and we reinstated traditional and new partnership field trips, school trips, and then the teacher and counselor outreach and help with engaging the students. Student engagement, we just, this is not inclusive, exclusive, but just some things that were included. Journal writing, writing, Monday mentors, advisory, morning meetings. Gigi was very popular with our students, motivating our elementary students to engage in the math competitions and still is. Our counselors using the at-risk category grades and attendance to identify and meet with students. Morning walks, family outreach, talking points. Helped to engage with our families with a different, a language. So that was a valuable tool this year. We added Google Translate, connecting students with the Wampanoak tutoring services. Falmouth High School students mentoring the Worspon students. Just providing work when students are in isolation quarantine and, which includes still some paper packets, mostly at the very young grades, but the Zoom playlist and Schoology. And the conversations under the tent, restating coffee hours, so trying to engage student and families. Dr. Teyer presented the A reading, A math, and M pass results for the growth and achievement. The Lawrence School was named as I, as last meeting, number 61 out of 491 Massachusetts schools. And the high school had previously been named 85 out of the 348. And Dr. Woodward has presented many times on the social emotional learning. And along with Nancy Ashworth's work with the DESA screener and assessment and aperture resources for tier one, tier two, and tier three interventions. The Calmer Choice rollout in every K to four classroom this year, and continuing our plan to increase VIPS volunteers, volunteers to facilitate classroom instruction for long-term sustainability. We had PD with Jessica Minihan, staff SEO, virtual PD sessions, and an increase in the school adjustment counselors and Gosnell counselors this year. Our health and safety, following all DESI guidelines, even when they shift from day to day or week to week. So our, I just have to give a shout out to our principals, just the incredible amount of time that they spend but really learning what is, and just with the shifts that's constantly happened this year, and what we've put in place with the health and safety has been really incredible. Certainly, we have a COVID team that includes Scott McGann and Dr. Parkinson. We discuss cases and scenarios in the school with them and just challenging situations. Talk through mitigating strategies beyond the state requirements and guidance. Our test and stay expanded, support staff, two contact tracers, two CNAs, seven health aids. People to help with the paperwork and data entry, an additional testing support. A temporary nurse coordinator, team effort for initial implementation of the testing, test stay program, streamlining the contact tracing procedures. We're retraining staff, students, and families on new protocols, information on the website, transparency with positive cases, quarantines, and vaccination data. Multiple timely vaccination and booster clinics. Starting last spring, all through and still happening, we actually have, I did mention earlier, we are setting up another in-school at the elementary level for clinics, so we can continue to support those efforts. Data indicates little to no in-school transmission. I did, we'll, we'll say that the contact tracers are having a difficult time being able to follow up with every case. In this last week, the, there's just, it's, it's just so much. So, but we could probably say that before last week, for sure. I need to change this for just a second. Okay, so additional key actions align the budget with strategies as needed. So the SRF funds for additional staff. Teachers, monitors, building-based substitutes, health assistance, staff and stay support. Align the budget for the PPE needs, including the cleaners and merd filters. The supporting the outdoor tents, so the outdoor classrooms, major trails, the academic field trips, and SEO. And professional development. Collaborate with the school committee leads on the shared goals and actions. We've had regular updates by Scott McGann and Dr. Parkinson. Family and staff communications are shared, updates on SRF funds. And the school committee members invited to conversations under the tent and coffee hours. That's goal one. Yeah, do you want to do questions per goal, or do you want to do it at the end?
Let's do questions at the end.
I'm sorry if I'm talking fast.
No, I know, you're trying to get a lot in. I think if I may interrupt quickly, just for school community members, remember that Lori did share a link to all of the things that she's saying. So please don't forget, get the viewers, they take notes. We have the link to everything she's repeating.
That's why I did that.
Yes, exactly.
All right, goal two, outreach and communication after limited interaction during COVID-19 during the 2021 school year. Reestablish in-person opportunities for engagement with staff, students, families, and continue our community engagement. Again, these are the standards. The measures. So this is just gathering information, coding and sharing the information out. Discussions with school council, staff and family letters, and presentation updates all will be explained in the next few slides. So key actions, hold in-person staff listening sessions at least three times during the year. The staff listening sessions, we have held on October 4th, October 13th, October 14th, October 18th, October 20th, October 27th, and November, but I don't know why I don't have the date. Summary of conversations. They were appreciative of the additional support staff and the low classroom size during the return to full in-person. And then also concerns with students' mental health. What we did to address that after we did the sessions, we added, in, we had 90 additional staff in 2021. We retained 60 positions for the 21, 22 school year to help keep the class sizes lower. So we had teachers for, and in strategic areas that were needed based on the student needs of those cohorts. Increased reading supports, increased school adjustment counselors, and building-based substitutes and monitors. The SEL contracted services for support with the DESA assessments, DES analysis, and the Castle and aperture resources. Implementation, we increased our counseling services, as I had mentioned, expanded the Gosnell counseling service. Increased McLean Hospital consultation services. Continued PD for staff with McLean Hospital, coping with COVID and the trauma-sensitive trauma response of preparing to bring students back to school, training. The wellness committee established a goal for addressing the social emotional needs of our school committee, or community, sorry, school community. Just a few highlights that, I'll show this is not exhaustive, but across the district, our counseling department was working on the academic coaches through VIPS to support our remote learners with last year. And certainly still supporting our students, not in remote learning, but if they have to quarantine or isolate. Have a dedicated focus and training on behavior therapy for middle and high school. McLean Hospital supports students facing trauma and trauma backgrounds. Counselors reported that through our initial learning of last year, that the technology introduced was actually very helpful and was able to help in many ways, or continue to help with the parents, and, and made it easier. Counseling department at Lawrence. 10 to 20 mini lessons using the Castle framework, schools using the positive behavioral intervention systems. Schools are working closely with the Family Resource Center and Hyannis to increase the needs, supports for both students and families. Zoom community meetings are happening to build and maintain a sense of community. So, and PTO meetings just to read, to keep, and right, so that hybrid model, so that we can have parents also continue to, to be at home and join us. And, and then just sharing our strategy for resilience in their newsletters for home. In fact, conversations with the superintendent. This is, that was during the fall, November 9th, November 12th, November 16th, November 19th, December 9th, December 14th, and January 6th. We had one-to-one sessions with volunteer staff in each school. I've had two coffee hours. Actually, we had three because I just had one, so this adding that. We've had family sessions. We've had four family sessions since the, in July. And we reestablished the student advisory. We've met with them twice. Sorry, three times. The first was convocation. And then two times, in September, we talked about SEL and COVID-related feedback. And November, the topic was focused on diversity, equity, and inclusion. So our partners, community partners, which we had stayed engaged with, that you can see here. I did add some notes. I'm not going to go through all the notes, but as I've said many times, the partners just makes our, our schools stronger. It's unique to the school district and very much appreciative. Collaborate with the school committee leads on the shared goals and, goals and actions. The school committee created a land acknowledgement, which we posted at the front doors of all schools. And now we are working with the Wampanoak members to secure authentic images, to create posters with the land acknowledgement to post throughout the schools and the FEF grant funding through the earmark funds is supporting that. And goal three, focus on diversity, equity, and inclusion. Work with principals and other district leaders to carry out the established vision and common language and delve deeper into professional learning for all staff, the challenges, our beliefs, understanding, and practices in the pursuit of equitable academic and social emotional outcomes for all students. We have the standards. I'm gonna, okay, so here are the measures, but I'm going to be talking about them through the next slide, so I'm just gonna move on on that one. So continue the cultural proficiency, professional learning, and consultations with administrative staff. And continue the cultural professions, professional, professional learning with all staff. So the admin team has continued with their book, monthly book studies with everyday anti-racism. We had a district-wide PD day for everyone on October 8th with Dr. Bram. We have two staff members, Henry St. Julian and Derek Zara, that has created cultural proficiency courses. They're optional, but they're, they are three one-credit courses designed to lead the district staff. The three courses are, the first course is focused on understanding the basic principles of cultural proficiency. The second is focusing on adjusting our lens to ensure all students feel that they are assets to the school and classroom. And the course three is focused on building community-based projects that enrich our shared understandings. We have had 34 participants in course one. The first time, 25 participants, the second time, and 20 participants in the, this fall. The third time it ran in course two, we have 33 participants on the first time it was offered. We also have the Vector Solutions course. This was formerly called Safe Schools. And the course is teachers and staff, personal skills for an inclusive classroom. The plan for implementation of modules one and two with our FE, our units, our teachers. And nurses, our teaching assistants, and our administrators would be, after they complete the course, there'll be a staff discussion with our DEI officer and consultant together just to further the understanding, and that would be for all, all the staff members. So begin the restorative practices, professional learning with Dr. Curtis Bates for pre-K through grade 12 administrators, teachers, and staff. We had an admin PD, we had one fall session with Dr. Bates, and then the admin council has continued with monthly discussions. We've had a staff and admin PD, two and a half hours with Dr. Bates. Over time, we will be wrapping that up over the next, during January and February, all of that training will be completed. And then Dr. Bates will work with us in the spring with just implementation of the practices we learned. The practice revised instructional and behavioral strategies were piloting circles with responsive classroom structure. K to six principals and the DEI officer took one day training, and that was also funded by the FEF earmark funds. So we're piloting circles within classrooms. The admin use restorative practices within the discipline process. And we're setting expectations for what scaled implementation will look like for the following, for next year. We're listening to the voices of staff, students, and families throughout the implementation of the new process to have feedback and any course correction that we may need. We've updated the student and family handbooks, revising the discipline philosophy. Concrete connection to portrait of graduate, vertically aligning the progression of behaviors and responses, K to 12. And we have staff-led information video that I shared out. The DEI officer has attended all the Dr. Bates PD and is now collaborating on implementation. So continue to review the curriculum inclusion opportunities and continue to review program data and increase diverse student inclusion. So just revising, rethinking curriculum, we have this grade eight social justice course and the Falmouth High School Social Justice Social Studies elective course that was added this year. So it's been running two years at Lawrence, and this is the first year of high school. We are in curriculum inclusion. We are working with Wampanoak partners just to embed the culture and the history, as well as our Cape Verdean partners for the culture and history embedded in our, our courses. In fall 2021, we combined CP1 and CP2 courses and increased the differentiation strategy so all students could be successful. We began an AP human geography in junior year, and we're collecting data as baseline for new changes. All right, and make systemic changes to inform our hiring practices and mentoring strategies. We've increased participation in the diverse recruitment fairs, and the mentoring induction program is now inclusive of cultural proficiency modules. Support the diversity, equity, and inclusion officer. We have the DEI officer. Jackie Hartman was hired and onboard, onboarded through the town process. Made introductions and/or arranged for introductions with, with school and our community partners. We began with principal, staff, school councils, PTOs, school committee, No Place For Hate, and the Cape Verdean community and the Wampanoak tribe. We have a goal-setting meeting on July, January 19th. And at this time, it looks like outreach, review policies, and assist with the implementation of restorative practices, including a discipline data now. And at this time, it looks like outreach, review policies, and assist with the implementation of restorative practices, including a discipline data analysis. Will be the goals of the DEI officer. And continue to connect with our community partners, our partners with Wampanoag tribes, our Cape Verdean partners, No Place for Hate, F E F, and Juneteenth Planning Committee, which we started. The winter of last year to plan for the, the first Juneteenth celebration. We've continued and we've expanded beyond Juneteenth for, for several other opportunities, so that's great committee that is very engaging. Align budget with practices, we have Dr. Brown's contract, Dr. Warren's PD and consultation contract, Dr. Bates PD and consultation contract. Compensation for facilitators of the cultural proficiency courses and books for book studies and the books for the cultural proficiency courses and collaborate with school committee leads on shared goals and actions. Which I shared the video on restorative practices, plan for restorative practices, training, overview, and shared terms and definitions.
Thank you.
That was a lot, thank you.
No, no, it's important to hear what you're up to. Any questions or comments for Dr. Door? Oh, interesting. I, I do feel like there's a lot more that I'll have to go through and I might have all the questions over time. But one that did jump out at me when you were talking about some of the trainings around goal number three. Specifically with all of the work being done with the restorative practices. You said there was a place for family feedback that you were soliciting that, could you explain more about how that is done and what that looks like?
So through, through the school councils, just talking with the about what the training is, the implementation, as well as we have feedback as we're implementing those tier-two interventions with students at tier-two, the circles that type. So the students that have been involved, the parents have been giving feedback because they're like the first students kind of running through that process, so that feedback from the parents have been very valuable.
Good. Great.
So I had a question about, I think Lori mentioned the Cape Verdean that is already in our curriculum. And if this is, can be answered by looking at the paperwork you said, then that's fine, you can direct me there and I'll read through that. But having worked with them, I'm just curious exactly what headway we've made with incorporating them in our curriculum.
So Mike Feeney has been working closely and looking our courses with the, in social studies. And the same is with the Wampanoag tribe, so he's been working with both and, you know, finding ways to include that authentic history where, where we can, so it's, it's updating our curriculum.
It's great, thank you.
Great, and thank you, that's a lot of material to share with us, I appreciate it. Next on our agenda is a discussion of the Cape Cod Collaborative Capital Reserve. So just to summarize, the letter, the full letter is in your packet. In summary, the collaborative board is comprised of representatives from districts across the Cape. And our representative from Falmouth is Bill Dorfner. And so in essence, the collaborative would like the school committee's approval to establish a capital reserve fund to support capital projects. And as noted in the letter, the approval of this fund would not commit our district. And I think that's very important to understand, if we approve it, we are not committing our funding to a capital reserve. It would merely allow the collaborative to fund the projects as voted on that. So the letter is in, again, in your packet. If there are any questions now that, you know, maybe Bill could answer or take back to the committee. We could share those questions now, otherwise at our next meeting, we will vote, we'll act on this request. So are there any questions? Great, seeing them, so, oh, sorry, Kelly, oh, sorry.
All right, and my internet is super unstable, so I apologize if you just said something about this when I dropped out. So do we know how the collaborative manages to fund capital items? Now, if they don't have a reserve fund, do they just deal with them as they come?
That's a great question, I know Bill, if you have any background information on that, Bill Dorfner, and it's okay if you don't, but.
Yeah, my, my, my understanding is they, they kind of deal with things as, as they come right now. They have a lot of projects moving forward that they would like to establish a capital fund for, so they're not just dealing with it at the time. And, and so they can't basically open that bank account with us, without us, or that account without us giving them permission to do so, so. Yeah, right, right now, they're, they're kind of funding through the budget. And through grants and so forth, as, as they're come, a, as they come, they just, they do not have a capital fund account right now.
Thank you for that. So again, so we will revisit this at our next meeting, I just wanted you to have adequate time to really review. And if you have any questions, please feel free to email, Bill Dorfner has our representative on that, so thank you. Back to Dr. Door for an update.
Okay. So some of them I've already mentioned, so I want to, today we had a a in-service for staff pre-K to six, some of the activities included. The kindergarten had the parent teacher conferences, we had a holistic scoring of winter common writing assessments. Teaching students to read complex texts, personalized pathways, MCAS scoring, curriculum alignment, unpacking the Massachusetts Lexia guidelines, writing IEPs, and exploring diversity in literature with a cousin's, and that's been an ongoing PD. In your packet, there is a picture of the Morse Pond Global Project. So this was a project that was funded through F E F, again, wonderful partner, they support the school so much. And through a series of activities that children were able to express their experiences in getting to know the students while they're examining their diversity and social emotional capacities. We are currently accepting applications for the twenty-two, twenty-three school, school year for preschool. There is a flyer in your packet. Kindergarten registration begins February twenty-eighth through March fourth. We are sending the message as I had shared with the school committee that I would do so about only children who are age five years old by August thirty-first will be allowed to register. Per our policy, J E B entrance age. A reminder was sent to the kindergarten screeners, principals, and school secretaries to double-check birth dates before screening students and before sending out mass welcome emails. And we will stay on top of that, and that's what I have to say.
Great, thank you, any questions for the update? Seeing none, next item on our agenda is routine business approved minutes of December fourteenth, twenty twenty-one. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from December fourteenth? Andrea. Andrea makes the motion and Melissa seconded, it's a roll call, oh, sorry, Terry, is your hand up, I apologize, okay. So Andrea made the motion and Melissa seconded it, it's a roll call vote, Melissa?
Melissa Keith, yes.
Lisa.
Lisa Hart, yes.
Bill Dorfner.
Your yes.
Kelly Welch.
Welch, yes.
Terry Maderas.
Maderas, yes.
Leah Palmer.
Palmer, yes.
Bill Ryder.
Ryder, yes.
Andrea Thurl.
Yes.
And Natalie Kellala was also a yes. Any committee member reports, Terry?
Okay. I went well because I couldn't find the raise your hand icon on my thing, anyway. I just wanted to make a report on the, from the communication committee. As of December thirty-first, there were three hundred and sixty-eight answers. And even though we're not done tallying everything, I think it's important to tell people that we're working on it. Because some of these things were probably written months ago, so we, we are working on it, I've been making my own spreadsheet. And we also are going to have a grad, having a grad student analyze the responses. I just wanted to make a few common observations made by people. One of them was objecting to the open-endedness of the survey that we sent out, which it's hard, like you think back, what it, when you're, you had to write an essay, what I did on my summer vacation, you don't know where to start. But we wanted people to just be spontaneous in their action, in their responses. And even with that open-ended format, we got so many common themes that were, we were categorizing totally the numbers and the types of responses and things. One response that I've noticed, I'm not going to speak for the overall tallyage yet because we haven't met formally to tally everything up. But one thing I noticed, and you know, I often speak up when it deals with teachers, is many people commented on the dedication of the teachers, even having added new initiatives like, you know, restorative justice learning and the emotional well-being of students that they're dealing with. So that's one thing that I'm sure will come out in the overall report because it's already popped up a lot. And a few people mentioned that the school committee is out of touch. And one of my favorite quotes that somebody said was quote-unquote, "The school committee is clueless." And I thought, good, then I'm glad we sent out the survey because if people feel like that, we need to tune into what they're saying. And one thing that comment made me think was, it gets tiring reading all those comments, but it's very interesting. And it also gave me an incentive to read more thoroughly, so, anyway. Natalie maybe knows exactly when it'll be done, but anyway, the process is going along.
Yes, so just to sort of very quickly piggyback on that, so yes, we have a grad student who has prepared an amazing, and I'm sorry, I think she's like, amazing. This amazing draft report, and I actually, we're going to speak to her next week. And then I'm going to bring it back to the goal one committee and then present it to the school committee. So the school committee will, will receive not only the summary report, and Terry spoke to some of those. But I'll also give you the raw data as well, if you want to really call through a lot of those comments, so more to follow. It, it's amazing and it was such a wonderful exercise for us to, to hear from our stakeholders and we just want to keep doing that and hear from more people going forward. So thank you, Terry, for speaking on that. Any other committee member reports? And Andrea?
Yeah, I just, hopefully everybody saw the FIPS news that came out today and it should be in your email if you haven't seen it. And there's a lot of great information in there, especially to see all of the programs that are back now that we, we couldn't do during COVID, so that's very exciting. And in addition to that, the, the programs that were the sort of stopgap to help during COVID, like the academic coaching new program, tutoring program, those are now continuing on because value was seen in those and the needs were there, so. Old programs came back, the, the stopgap programs are still in place, so there's a lot going on. And then also just make sure you have a quick look at the part about the college mentoring program. Because it's just so amazing at the meetings to hear the stories about, the program's been around long enough that when we send students back on college visits back this year, that the people who are talking to them and giving them the tours are alums from our program who are at the schools and the, just the rave reports we hear about how well-spoken they are. What they can communicate about the value of the program to our current students, it's, it's just amazing.
Thank you. Any other committee member reports?
Leah?
I'm very happy to report that I received four observations and you can see me in the background here, I'm trying to scan bill your, Bill Ryder's thing right now and it's not working, I keep on trying different ways, so I will be, I, I wanted to just know what I'm supposed to do now. Since this is my first time getting these, am I putting these in a shared folder? What, what's my next step with this?
Sure, so they need to be shared with the superintendent if you haven't already done so, or the person who wrote them hasn't already done so, so that's it. That can be an offline conversation where you can sort of follow up with, with Lori on that. And then they will be part of the overall evaluation for the year. So you can put them in a shared folder, whatever works for you, but they will be part of the overall evaluation for the superintendent this year.
Okay, so the process is this goes to you, Dr. Door, and then then I share them.
Yes, I mean, yes, Lori should definitely be part of the conversation about reviewing the observations made about her work.
Just a process piece, so that when you're doing an observation, that's not part of the observation of meeting with Lori? At that point? Just, just clarification for me, since this is my first time.
First or after, I mean, it's as long as it's part of the process, yes.
Okay, so my plan will be, Lori, I will send these to you and then you can let me know who you haven't had discussions with yet. And then let me know when, when you're ready for me to send them on.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any other committee member reports? Nope, okay, request for information. Terry?
Okay, I'm talking at the end when everybody's tired, sorry, I'll make it quick. I was on Lisa and I were on the NEASC interviewed by, you know, of community, of school committee members and as to the school committee being clueless. I was wondering, are we ever going to get to see what the NEASC report was from Falmouth High School? Because I think it would be a great thing for us to see, because I'm confident that they talk about sending off students with a proper backpack into the world. I don't think we need a presentation by the principals on it, if we could just read the report, I'm sure we must, we must get a report. Okay, and the other thing, it, maybe it's not an information, but request, but I read a letter to the editor in the enterprise this week from Dr. Zabara. I don't know, other people read it, talking about how disappointed he was that the Falmouth Public Schools don't open their buildings and athletic fields for the public to use. And I thought in prior years, we encouraged people to use them. Anyway, that's his perception and it was in the paper and I think maybe somehow we should look into that.
Yep, Dr. Door has a quick response to that.
So the only time that we have not allowed community was during our, the COVID year. So this year, we opened back up our facilities to be used by the community members. We very much believe that, that our schools and the the fields and the track and not are, it's, it belongs to the community. And so we very much have a process and they are being used. Part of that article also mentioned the, the pickleball courts. And I just want to say that they do not belong to the schools, that is town property. And we do not have any, although they allow the schools to use the tennis courts during school time for PE class, which we host. And then other than that, it, they are for use with the, we, the community with that. So just wanted to mention that, I also read that article, Terry, thank you for bringing that up.
Yeah, um, maybe we could just put out a positive, come on down and use our stuff. Even though we, we, maybe people don't realize it was COVID impacted and I, there is a lot of confusion around town about who owns those pickleball courts. So people unfortunately assume that we control, do, but whatever. Anyway, just some positive information put forward would be good, because it's, right now, people aren't probably even listening to us talk about it anymore. So maybe we can tell them about it tomorrow or something, or in the future.
Kelly and then Bill.
I'm just a quick restate of my request that the policy committee, at least to have a conversation about including immigration status and making it across all of our anti-discrimination policies and procedures.
Great, thank you, and Bill Dorfner?
I, I just want to piggyback on the, on the, on the school buildings, I'm currently coaching rec league basketball and I know those groups are also using. And I know those groups are also using the school buildings right now. They do have to go by the D E S E guidelines of wearing masks. They're in a school building versus if they're at the rec department. But they are definitely open, they're being used and it's it's great to see.
Great. Thank you for that. Any other request for information? Seeing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Bill Dorfner raises the motion, Melissa Keith seconds it, roll call vote, Kelly Welch.
Welch, yes.
Melissa Keith.
Melissa Keith, yes.
It's a heart.
It's a heart, yes.
Bill Dorfner.
Dorfner, yes.
You all moved around again, so I apologize if I say Kelly, well, I already said Kelly, yes. Okay, Terry Medeas.
Yes.
Leah Palmer.
We have Palmer, yes.
Bill Ryder.
Ryder, yes.
Andrea. And Natalie Kellab was also, yes, thank you for sticking in. It was a long night, but thank you. Take care. Bye.
Bye.
Bye. Thank you.